Mayor Harris. Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
All right. Do we have any closed session items, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session.
I could have done that.
I'm so sorry. You're looking at me. Did you want me to go?
Well, I thought, you know what, I had a habit, but if we have a closed session, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957B1, position City Manager. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session. All right, you guys ready? All right. Okay, we'll call meeting to order. Happy to see everybody here today. Got a full house. It's always nice to see. Let me read this real quick. This meeting is being held in the council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. I object too. All right, may we have a roll call, please, ma'am?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
All right, very good. We have, if anyone can please rise, we're going to have an invocation today by Pastor Bruce Glines from the Sutter Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you tonight, and it's great to have a full house. It really is. And thank you for this privilege. Before we pray, I just wanted to say thank you to our mayor, vice mayor, city manager, and all the staff of the city. And I want you to know that you guys are doing a great job, and there are a lot of people out here that support you, we're behind you, and we even pray for you, okay? And, but thank you for the great job that you're doing. So, let's go ahead and pray. Father, we just thank you for this opportunity and the privilege that we have today to join together like this. We thank you for the freedom that we have, a freedom that so many around this planet don't have. So, we thank you. We thank you for our leaders that you have given to us. We thank you for the people that have come, the people of Yuba City, to share their opinions and to support and to have input in the direction our city goes. Father, we pray your blessing upon this meeting tonight, and we pray that you would give our council wisdom and discernment to make good choices, the right choices. And Father, we pray your blessing upon this great city that we love. It's still a great town, a great place to raise our family, and it's a community that has a great, great future, and we are grateful. We pray this in your name, and everybody say it with me. Amen. All right, Mr. City Attorney, do we have any reports on closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, thank you. For under agenda modifications due to anticipated recusals, consent calendar items 15... Let's see, I think we took 18 off. 15, 16, 17. 18 will no longer require a recusal, so 15, 16, 17 will be removed and voted on. Mr. City Attorney, do you have something else to add on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a matter of clarification, on item number nine, there are actually, on the consent calendar, there are actually two resolutions. Resolution number one is for item A, and resolution number two is for items B and C. Your approval of the consent calendar will approve those two items. Additionally, as to item number 14, there is a resolution for item A, but there is no resolution for item B, so that the clarified language would just be to authorize the city manager to negotiate, as stated in the report. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Now, we have, moving on to item number one, ceremonial presentations. Number one is National Public Works Week Proclamation. If we'd like to invite Ben Moody and our Public Works staff to come forward, please. What? Oh, good. Good. Oh, you want me to go up there?
Yep.
Bruce was my youth pastor when I was a kid.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Lot of backup here, Ben.
We do.
I need to squeeze through here and grab my eyes, if I may. Thank you very much. All right, National Public Works Week. You all can see we have pretty good vibrant Public Works staff here. I tell you what, they do a lot of good work every day. We all see them when we're driving around. They're taking care of business, and so here we go. Whereas, the city of Yuba City Public Works Department is proud to create and maintain the vital infrastructure of the city, including transportation facilities, water treatment and supply, wastewater treatment and collection, and public facilities. These services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of the entire Public Works staff. It is the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Yuba City to understand and appreciate the critical role of the Public Works Department in their community. For 2024, the American Public Works Association selected the theme of advancing quality of life for all, to recognize that public works professionals advance our quality of life by providing essential services that leads to healthier, happier, and more vibrant communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, standing behind me somewhere back there, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2024, as Public Works Week, and ask that citizens and civic organizations alike acquaint themselves with these issues involved in providing public work services and recognize the contributions that the men and women of Public Works make in our daily lives. And I tell you, that goes without saying. That is a huge deal, because, you know, when we have a bad storm, those storm drains get plugged up at 3:00 AM. These guys are out here taking care of business for us, right? And that's just one example. You tend to maybe take it for granted, right, that it's going to work. But boy, they're out there. Somebody's got to do the work, and you're looking at several of the folks who do that. So, please give them a round of applause.
You know, I just say, well said, very well said. Thank you for the proclamation, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmember. These are truly the men and women of our community that keep our infrastructure and keep our quality of life going, from street sweeping to the traffic signals running for the treatment plants that affect everybody's day. And so, thank you again for everybody, and appreciation.
I have a feeling this is going to be another big crowd here. We're Savannah Wilbanks at all. Come on down, and everybody, everybody who wants to, come on down. Can Brian hear me? Can you hear me? You okay? It doesn't sound like I'm, it doesn't sound like I'm doing it. Mr. Mayor, if it's working, don't worry about it. It just doesn't sound like it on my end. All right, we're Savannah. Oh, okay, so you are Tabitha. How are you doing? How are you doing there, young man, young lady? How are you? You're doing great, huh? All right. All right. I gotta do what I gotta do here. So, this is Tuberculous, Tuberous Sclerosis Complex Awareness Day. Anybody have not heard of that? I hadn't either until I got an email from Tabitha here, my new friend, about her daughter's Savannah. How are you? So, let me read the proclamation here. "We are recognizing and trying to increase awareness, doing our part to increase awareness of tuberous sclerosis complex by making this an awareness day." So, "Whereas, an estimated 50,000 Americans and 1 million people worldwide have been diagnosed with tuberous sclerosis complex, TSC, a genetic disease with no cure." Almost done. "TSC is often a devastating disorder that causes tumors to form in vital organs, including the brain, heart, kidneys, skin, liver, and lungs. The disease is also the leading genetic cause of both epilepsy and autism." Interesting. "The incidences of TSC are common, as Lou Gehrig's disease ALS or cystic fibrosis, making increased awareness of TSC vitally important. The Tuberous Sclerosis Alliance and other groups around the world have joined together to promote awareness of the disorder to ensure people with TSC get the best possible treatment and proper diagnosis. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim May 15, 2024, as Tuberous Sclerosis Complex Awareness Day, and urge all of our citizens to support the search for a cure and assist those individuals and families who deal with this challenging disease on a daily basis." Would you care to say anything, ma'am? You gonna make it through? You can do whatever you want.
Four years ago, on May 19, 2020, my life changed forever. Before walking into a UC Davis ultrasound office, I was an ordinary Yuba Sutter citizen, five months pregnant with my first child during a pandemic. At the doctor's appointment that day, I would hear the words rhabdomyoma, high drops, SVT, and tuberous sclerosis for the first time in my life. They said what it all meant was my unborn daughter had developed fluid all over her body due to a heart tumor causing her heart to beat 300 beats per minute. They said she was so sick, she had only a 5% chance to make it to birth. What I would learn in the following months to years is the perfect combination of doctors, therapists, medications, a mother's love, and God's grace could perform miracles. My daughter Savannah was born full term on September 8, 2020, but her fight would continue. At a week old, we learned she was having around 100 seizures a day. At four months old, she would undergo her first brain surgery to remove the problem tumor. Last year, at two years old, she would have two more brain surgeries, and possibly another one this year. And through all of it, Savannah continues to smile. She is really the definition of a warrior. In between brain surgeries last year, she learned to walk, and she is now learning to talk, use ASL, and an AAC device to communicate. Savannah, along with numerous doctors, therapists, teachers, friends, and family, and now you, Mayor Harris, and the Yuba City Council are the heroes of this story. You see, there is no cure for tuberous sclerosis. Tumors can continue to grow, and all my daughters fight well wิกs. It is a rare disease affecting 50,000 Americans, and all over the country, we're fighting for a cure. In city halls like this one, doctors' offices, research labs, offices in Washington DC, we're searching for that one right person to unlock the cure for our children. If you're lucky to have a child with special needs in your life, you know what a blessing they are. They teach us perseverance, compassion, resilience, to celebrate big and small milestones, to see the miracles around us, to enjoy life to the fullest, and perhaps most importantly, to love and accept, because isn't that what we all want as human beings? To be loved, accepted, and included just the way we are. There are countless families in our area experiencing heartbreak similar to ours, so today is for all of us. May we continue to find the courage to get up every day, to research, to advocate, to educate, to drive the hundreds of miles for our kids to receive the best care, to show up to all the appointments, to write the letters even when our hands are trembling, and to be our children's voices while they're still finding their own. To my friends and family, I couldn't get out of bed after that news four years ago, and since then, you have all rallied behind me, and now here I am, standing on my two feet, so thank you. And all of this is to say, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Mayor Harris, and the Yuba City Council for recognizing tuberous sclerosis complex. You are all now interwoven into the fabric of our story. I'm deeply grateful for the ripple this creates in our wave toward a cure. Days like May 19, 2020, may always break my heart, but days like today help mend it back together, so thank you so very much.
I'm freaking crying.
We have another very worthwhile cause to recognize. Come on down. They know who they are. Congratulations, darling. All right, we're here right now to, we have the pleasure of honoring Sutter County Children and Families Commission for 25 years of service. Whereas, the Sutter County Children and Families Commission was established in 1999 by the Sutter County Board of Supervisors after California passed Proposition 10, the Children and Families Act, aimed at improving the early development of children from the prenatal stage to five years of age. The commission affirms that parents are the child's first teachers, and that all caregivers should have access to support information that enables children to thrive. The commission has also strived to ensure that people whose careers include supporting families and young children have access to professional development opportunities to increase their knowledge and skills in child development. Over the past 25 years, Sutter County Children and Families Commission has been at the forefront of providing early childhood services. The commission has served more than 425,000 children, families, and providers, and invested more than $26 million into the community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire council, do hereby recognize and commend the Sutter County Children and Families Commission for their unwavering commitment to the well-being of all children, and congratulate the commission on their 25th anniversary. Congratulations, well done. Let's give them a hand.
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor, and esteemed council members. First and foremost, on behalf of Sutter County Children and Families Commission, I'd like to introduce our small, yet extremely mighty, team. I'll start with Erica Melcher.
Pam Bossy.
Jennifer Ibarra.
Julie Price.
And then we have nine wonderful leaders in our community that serve as our commissioners, and one is right here.
Thank you, Dr. Blake. She just got her PhD. So, Mark Boomgarden.
Thank you. And so, with this team, as well as our nine commissioners, we are challenged to ensure that our children, our zero-to-five children, thrive to the best of their ability. And so, again, on behalf of Sutter County Children and Families Commission, I extend a heartfelt gratitude for acknowledging and recognizing the work that is done in Sutter County, where we invest in our community by increasing the resilience and strengthening families each and every day, thanks to this wonderful team. So, again, thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to item number four, Adventist Write Out, Adventist Health and Write Out, Project Hope update. Welcome back, Chris.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here with you all tonight. I got here, I thought, wow, there's a lot of people here to hear me tonight, and then realized it was not my story. So, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about where we are. If you will humor me, I'm going to give a little bit of the story that you all know because you have been so supportive of it, but for those of you who may not be familiar with Project Hope, it is a joint effort between the city of Yuba City, the city of Marysville, the county of Sutter, county of Yuba, Beale Air Force Base, Adventist Health and Write Out, and a variety of other organizations to build infrastructure within the two communities, two counties, for individuals who are along the Behavioral Health and Crisis Continuum. That is a new term to me, Behavioral Health and Crisis Continuum, not just behavioral health, but the whole continuum. So, Project Hope was conceived several years back to provide medical recuperative care, short-term post-hospitalization housing. So, for those individuals who are coming out of the hospital who have a diagnosis, but they don't have a place to go, we need to be able to discharge them to a safe place. This would provide that for them. A sobering center, most certainly an issue for our communities, temporary housing for those who just don't have it, housing navigation, so individuals who are looking for housing, we actually have navigators who can help direct people to different housing opportunities. Supporting spaces and behavioral health urgent care, so for those individuals who are in an active crisis, we have an urgent care. So, we have been making some progress. I am very happy to announce, and I think I came back a while ago and said, that we had received an $8 million grant from Pathways. If you will recall, we were going after a $12 million grant from B-CHIP, Behavioral Health Continuation Improvement Project. At the last minute, we decided to not go after that grant because it had a 30-year requirement for Adventist Health and Write Out to provide that services, and if something failed, we were not able to provide that for the full 30 years. There was no out, despite our working with the government to get that done. So, we did not get the 12 million, but we did get $8 million to do that. Again, what we are going to do with that $8 million, and I'll talk a little bit about this in a minute, is to, of all of these services that you see there on the screen that we are going to offer at Behavioral Health, we're going to look at which ones of these, which of these, we can bring to full execution for that $8 million. The remainder of them will come as we get additional funding for the project. This is where the schematic for Project Hope Major, which is the old Fremont Hospital located on Plumas, you can see how we plan on rebuilding that. Again, we will not get there for the $8 million. The original price tag on the project, if you recall, was $21 million. I think with the inflation that we've had over the last year or two, that's probably optimistic. I think probably $24, $25 million is more in line with what we're going to be seeing. The, the different floors were laid out for different reasons. The first floor, we are planning on the Behavioral Health Urgent Care, the Sobering, and the Crisis Stabilization Unit. You can see how that floor is laid out. Going to the second and third floors, we are planning on Recuperative Care and Post-Hospitalization on Floor Two, and the third floor is Recuperative Care and Post-Hospitalization as well. Just, again, a refresher, the five-story building is what we're focusing on here. The building just to the north of that needs to be torn down, completely gutted, and then the building to the far north, we can actually renovate, but it's not part of this initial project. And then on the fourth and fifth floors, we have the Homeless Wellness Center on fourth floor, and on the fifth floor, we have training and support, so administrative space for that. Project Hope Minor is the first step in this project. We've been talking about that. I know Vice Mayor Shaw and Mark, we've been talking about this quite a bit in our out-of-meeting conversations. I cannot be more excited. We actually signed the lease. I feel like that needs a round of applause. We've been after that for a very long time. Thank you. In that space, we will have the 22-bed Sobering Center. There'll be limited services, but it gets us going. This will be open by the end of this calendar year. We, let me go back. If anybody's interested in a, at a project management job, we are hiring, I will say, we got a lot of applicants who were in the IT space, thinking that it was IT management. This is not a, this is a construction and programmatic management space, so anybody who is interested, please contact me or Robin Oliver, and we'll get you the numbers later on. Project Hope Minor, again, 22-bed facility located along Garden Highway. If you're going south on Garden Highway, just immediately past the fairgrounds on the right-hand side there, where the county used to have some services, that's the location that we got. This is the schematic for what we're going to be building in there. We just signed a contract with a builder. Unfortunately, we tried to get a local builder. We'd got no applicants. This builder is out of Sacramento. We think that we can have the construction in demo, done within the two-to-three, four-month period, again, with the eye of actually having this center open by the end of this calendar year. The pathway forward, we removed the Project Hope Minor forward. Our goal, again, is to open this by the end of the calendar year. We're going to continue to go after additional funding for Project Hope Major. We will have to have that $8 million spent by the end of 2025, so we're moving quickly on that. And so, again, we're looking at the range of services and prioritizing which ones we will have in Project Hope Major initially. I want to thank you, the city council, for your continued support. I know each one of you individually have supported this. You have written letters supporting it. You continue to support us at the hospital, so I cannot thank you enough personally, on behalf of the community for doing that. If anybody else would like to get involved in Project Hope, there is our email address. And I think with that, I will field questions.
All right, we have any questions from council? Nothing?
The mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chris, just a couple of questions for people that may not fully get what's going on with Major and Minor. What kind of facility is Minor going to be down on Garden Highway? Is it going to be a, I guess what we call a lockdown facility for sobriety and things of that nature, or, you know, what can, what can the neighbors down there expect? Because those are the types of questions that we, we get, you know, from time to time. Because those are the types of questions that we get, you know, from time to time.
Yeah, I think, great question. It is not a lockdown facility, and that's a very important question. We will not have lock services. These are for individuals who need post-hospitalization housing. So again, one of the requirements of a hospital is that we cannot discharge a patient unless they have a safe place to go. And you've probably heard me tell this story more times than you care to hear, but we have people who are actually living at the hospital because they have no safe place to go. Last year, we had one individual who celebrated one year at living at the hospital. This year, we had a young man drop off or join us, and he lived in our emergency department from December 31 of 2023 until just last month. He lived in our emergency department because there's no safe place for them to be discharged to. So this provides, the Sobering Center, it provides that post-hospitalization housing for them for a short period of time. We will not have a lockdown facility. We will not have people who are in absolute crisis. That's for a different kind of service. Thank you for the question. It was great.
Okay. Thank you. And the other, and I know, I understand it because there are a couple of us on the council here that's lived, that's lived this crisis at the hospital with not having enough beds. But with 20, I think you said 22 beds is going into that, what kind of impact is that going to have on your services at the hospital for people to go in and need a bed and, you know, they're sitting in the hallway of the ER, they're in the ER? I know personally, we were there for about, I think it was 24 to 28 hours because of this exact situation. There was no beds. So can you explain what impact this will have to our residents?
It'll give us 22 beds that we don't have now. I don't want to stand up here and say that this is going to solve the problem. It's not. I will tell you another story. So just a few days ago, we had 40 patients holding in the emergency department that had orders to be admitted to the units, 40 patients. I was there at 2:00 AM. We walked the hallway. Every single emergency room bed was full. Every emergency room hallway was full, and the back hallway was full of emergency room patients. We are seeing a tremendous utilization of the emergency department by individuals who are in the Behavioral Health and Crisis Continuum. We are not a behavioral health facility. We are a medical facility. If you come in and you have a medical crisis, it is very difficult to get a bed. We've had some very horrifying stories, which I cannot share, in the last couple of days, of people who came in who had medical crises, and we just didn't have beds to put them in. Even the hallways were full of people. So this is a 22-bed relief valve for a very, a bigger problem. Again, 22 out of 40, right? So it's half the problem, but it's at least a start. And when we get to Project Hope Major, it'll provide us over 100 beds towards that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any comment from the public or anything? Men? Gentlemen? Nope? All right, Chris, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I think I've screwed up your slides here. I apologize.
All right, item number five, Greater Sacramento Economic Council presentation. Welcome, Mr. Broome.
Mayor, that was not an intentional long walk, I'm going to let you know.
Pretty dramatic there.
There's no swag in there whatsoever. Well, thank you, and Vice Mayor Shaw, thank you for spending the day with me. So got to spend the entire day here, and it's really impressive, the economic growth in Yuba City. And I was very excited about the downtown. It was very, you know, very powerful, dynamic industrial corridors. So we all want more, but I was saying to the Vice Mayor, it's really important that you celebrate where you came, because, you know, a few years ago, that was not the case. Yuba City was struggling, and it's just bustling. And seeing all the home building and the 2,600 new homes. And of course, you know, all of our labor data showing that Yuba City and Sacramento's labor market is almost becoming common, and I think you now have a city income around $68,000, $70,000 a year. So a lot's been accomplished. So I'll take you through, you know, a brief overview. And, you know, so when 2015, before I get into this presentation, I always like to frame thinking, so, you know, what would happen if the state of California understood a marketplace and started to really help us? What if they started thinking about reducing liability, you know, working on our brand, improving competitiveness? Think about how much more dynamic we would be. So California is last in the United States right now in performance economically. We're 50th in unemployment. Greater Sacramento is number two in the United States. We're number two in the country in employment, but the state's 50th right now in unemployment. And I think the difference is, you know, after 2008, you know, the business leadership got together and said, hey, you know, we were the last economy to recover in the United States. 2015, we were the second worst place in the United States for a young person to find a job. All of our college kids were leaving town. And, you know, we had little small pockets of people working in factions, no real alignment, no real single vision, no real effort to do something about the economy. And of course, we were one-third dependent upon government. And if you saw where Governor Newsom cut the education budget by $12 billion, those structural deficits at the state level, they're going to be around for a while. You know, this is in a recession where they're going to come back. Wall Street's trading at 40,000 points, and national unemployment's under 4%. So, you know, we got a challenge throughout the state. You know what's going on in LA? You know what's going on in San Francisco? Obviously Oakland, you know? And, you know, the CEOs in our community, you know, invited me to come up. I ran the Greater Phoenix Group for 10 years. I knew Kevin Johnson there. I come out of Ohio and Michigan 17 years, so I've been a professional economic developer since '88. So if I would have thought we'd have had the success we had, I would have been astonished. And there's a lot to be really excited about, and yet, there's still a lot of threats going. So I'm going to take you a little bit through, you know, imagine if you built an organization whose job it was, was to create and manage the total marketplace in the region, you know, make sure its major assets were functioning in an efficient and productive way together, like your universities, your healthcare systems, or your airports, and then, you know, build a single point of contact to drive investment nationally and globally, you know, worked and developed our reputation, and focused on increased competitiveness, and then got 48 CEOs to pay for it, right? So we're 85% privately funded. And the point of the organization is to help Yuba City, you know, Marysville, Lincoln, you know, that is the purpose of the organization. And when it got formed, a lot of people didn't think we could be a public-private partnership because there were so many divisions on the political side, right? It was Roseville versus Sacramento, and Folsom versus Rancho, and, you know, Davis versus everybody, and so on and so forth, right? So we've been able to build a unique alignment, and I'm going to congratulate you, Mayor, and you Vice Mayor, and others that have really stuck it out to make this work. So there's 48 CEOs on our board. Now, we've only had two board members drop since 2015. Both of them sold their businesses. And so it's a real success story. I'll talk about it regionally, and then I'll give you some feedback on what I think we can do together more locally to help lift Yuba City, because I know it's a great city, and it got there by you having high standards and being ambitious, and we want to be part of that as well. So growth, sustainability, equity, competitiveness, we can go ahead and go through the slide now. Thank you. Am I doing it? That could be really dangerous. Is it this one? There we go. All right. So I talked a little bit about it. So, you know, you want to create one seamless market, right? So basically, if you talk to a major corporation, they'll tell you, you're an airport, a quality of life metric, and you're a labor force, you know? And if you look at one of the reasons Yuba City's doing so well is a lot of the high-end Sacramento labor force is moving out here for a better quality of life. You know, you're building six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar homes because of that. And then, one of the things that's really hurt California is they've run all the CEOs off. You know, the CEOs have become the bad guys in California. So if you go down to San Francisco, you don't see any CEOs helping out. You don't see anybody in Oakland. And you know, there's not a single CEO of, think about, Los Angeles has 50 billionaires, there's not one CEO in Los Angeles, sitting on their chamber board or sitting on their Economic Development Council. So we built all of ours, and then the question would be, you know, how do we build industries? Really, you know, people think, you know, we recruit companies because they hear about Bosch. That's true, but really what we do is build an industry strategy. So, you know, we saw that food processing capabilities in your community, so ag and food processing, food tech, that would be an industry strategy. And maybe agricultural biotech might be in Yolo County, and expanded food processing might be in Yuba City, and maybe food tech research might be occurring on the Davis campus. But we would think about it in terms of an industry, not a company. And then the inputs of the community that make the industry more efficient and productive, the companies show up. You know, if you look at Solidaime and Bosch, you know, they showed up because we got more efficient and productive. Because if we're not more efficient and productive, we can't talk a company into coming into our community, right? That's called a tradable sector, and that's why you're getting this big lift now. We're starting to shift those numbers. We were one-third dependent upon government. That's now about 21%. You saw what happened to downtown Sacramento, permanent loss of 30,000 jobs. That'll never change. So now, that was an employment center totally dependent upon government. Government made one decision, ruined working, boom, it's gone. And so, you know, we want to make sure our economy's diversified, and we don't continue to suffer that. My incoming chair is Chancellor Gary May, and right now, my chair is Matina Cola Katronis. 2022 and 2023, we were named the number three organization in the world by the International Economic Development Council. You know, I don't really know what the metrics are on that. Obviously, it isn't good-looking CEOs, or we wouldn't have made it, but we're really proud of that, and I got a very young team that's kind of born and bred. And you can see, this is really how the market works, right? We got two MSAs, we blend them together, you know, you drive value, increase capabilities at a Sac State, a community college, right? UC Davis is making, UC Davis and Sac State are fully engaged in economic development. 10 years ago, UC Davis told me they were a San Francisco company, university, when I met with them. They were wondering what I was doing in their office. Their faculty came out of Berkeley, their startups all went to San Francisco and Silicon Valley, they were over the cause, Wayne Davis. They were wondering why I was in their office. Obviously, that's changed dramatically under Gary May's leadership. So we've done about 28,000 jobs. That's heavy lifting, and those jobs, you know, have high wages. Last year, our average wage was about $117,000. The year before that, the average wage was about $141,000. Sometimes you get a big win like Bosch, and everybody makes over $200,000. So they bring the numbers up. We've brought about 121 companies here, and we try to either, we try to make it an investment in jobs. We might bring the company here, we might help a spin-out of UC Davis expand, you know? Or, you know, we might keep a company here from migrating out of the state by, you know, having some ability to affect their outcome. We generate about $22 in tax income for every dollar invested in GSAG. So the goal is, you know, in exchange for the communities working together and staying aligned and being consistent and improving, you know, they're only 15% of the budget. You know, we really don't do anything for the kings, and, you know, maybe some corporation buys a suite. So the goal is, how do you move the needle in the town's economy? And I have some statistical data that's pretty impressive. So Brookings Institute, you know, if you look at who's trying to figure out what to do with Ukraine right now in Washington DC, it's probably the Brookings Institute. So the Brookings Institute was, you know, major advisors to Bush on Iraq. It was, they were, you know, major advisors to President Obama on how to get out of the recession. You know, they've been major advisors to Biden on how to manage inflation. So, you know, they're usually headed up by, you know, sometimes a five-star general. I mean, it's a really impressive institution. So we always use somebody else to measure us so that we don't look like we're propagandizing our own success. So you can see in 2017, 100 being last, we weren't doing very well. 66 in growth, 72 in prosperity, what are incomes doing? 80 inclusion. And inclusion is, you know, really, you know, about how does everybody participate in your economy, right? You have a significant Latino community in Yuba City, you want to make good money, right? You don't want to be on the end, right? We know what happens when there's people at the bottom and people at the top. You know, we get a lot of social disruption. So you want to monitor that, and then obviously, you want to monitor racially, but also geographically. I'm really proud of the fact that we're the third highest-rated region in the United States on how the economy is shared regionally. A great example is all the Sacramento interface now out at Yuba City, right? And now we're working on Beale Air Force Base, and Beale Air Force Base is putting in $1 billion. How does that translate? And in long term, we could end up with thousands of aerospace jobs at Beale Air Force Base. You know, what are we doing with Yuba College? You know, all these assets play some role in the economy, and if you get them lined up and working and measured in a more efficient way, Sierra College will be a great example. Willie Duncan's probably running the best training program I've seen out of any college in US. You can move the needle. So we also have, as we've also just came out, you know, we've had the second-largest decrease in relative poverty and the biggest increase in gross product. So that's our job. How do you aggregate this and grow it? And then, you know, basically, a third of our money's spent on research. And then a third of our money, and so when we work with your local teams, if you probably talk to your team that works on a city manager, they're probably interfacing a lot with us on research and data. So if they were trying to land something or do something different, they'd be coming to us to data. So we spend almost $1 million a year just maintaining the data. And the reason the data matters is because that's how we got the athletics. I'll talk to you a little bit later about the athletics. You know, we're, we still have a lagging reputation as a region, and while we're starting to improve it, California's going down. So if you can't produce a database case for investment, you're out of luck, and that data's got to be reflected by the Brookings Institute, or ENY, or Deloitte, or McKinsey. So all of our data sets mirror what some Fortune 500 company would be. So we continue to try to run from the government, right? And you can see to the right, we were at 33, we're at 21. Basically, we need 128,000 more jobs in this region that are industry-based, whether they're aerospace, software, agricultural, zero emission vehicles, independent of the government, to give us a normal relationship with the government. You know, like a Columbus, Ohio, or an Indianapolis, those are state capitals. And if we have an overburden on the state capital for jobs, and it goes into a long period of structural deficits like it is, it's going to spend less money, it's going to cut programs, it's going to lay off people, it's going to contract, and that's going to be tough on us. So we're kind of in a race to diversify, and the industries we work on are the ones we think we can compete on. So what we essentially do is we have an ongoing national, domestic, and international outreach for companies, right? So we build this data set. The data set tells us what we're really good at. We take that data set, and we start pushing it out through mostly consulting channels, the McKinsey office in New York City, right? So you got all these big consulting houses all over the country. There's a bunch of them in San Francisco and Los Angeles, and they're the ones that are advising Jeff Bezos, and Elon Musk, and Tim Cook at Apple. This is where you ought to be, right? So like, when we got Bosch, and we got Solidaime, I mean, they came through Deloitte out of New York. So the Germans, you know, you don't cold-call $100 billion German company, you know, you'd be, so, but these consultants, and there's about 150 of them, they kind of get paid to know what's going on. Now, watching California, and California's not going in the right direction. It's still the fifth biggest economy. It's got this major innovation platform. Nobody wants to live in San Francisco and Oakland anymore. You know, LA's a mess. What do we do? I mean, we don't really want to be there, but we kind of got to be there. But we can't really be in these other places because it isn't sustainable for our communities. And over time, what we're starting to build is, well, this region is a place where you can do it. You know, you can interface with the Bay Area and Silicon Valley from here. You can have access to regulators, you can do different things, and then you can still live because we still got a strong quality of life like we have in Yuba City. So interesting, 40% of our business activity is now international. So we track and manage this. Your Economic Development Director gets on calls with us every 60 days. We go through all the deals, this is what's going on. And then the local communities can hear what these companies are looking for. So when they're doing things like general plans and working with developers, they'll understand what kind of real estate and product to put in their community that's attractive to business. So the good news is, we still have laborability. It's good news, bad news. About a third of the people in our region, it doesn't matter where you live, it's even in Placerville County, are living below living wage standards. You know, we've lifted our top number pretty successfully, but like a lot of people in the country, that bottom number is not being brought up, and it's largely a skills gap. You know, we're not putting hard skills in the hands of everybody in our community. And so employers will come into our market because they see there's more labor availability, right? You go into Austin, it's like 2.5% unemployment. You know, some of these places, you can't even find a body anymore, right? And you've got small businesses here that are probably telling you, it's like, it's pretty tough to find people. Yet, you know, we still have some capacity in that labor market if we build the skills. And so, you know, we continue to have employers come in here, and then they tighten that labor market. That's how wages go up, and that's how poverty drops. That's why, you know, we've had such success in dropping poverty. So we're kind of at a tipping point. So this is a big reputation play, right? So one of the things we work on is our reputation line. Like, how much in a market with 2.6 million people, how much does 28,000 jobs mean? Well, it means a lot. It means everyone got paid back, right? Changing our brand and reputation, how does that translate? But when you land, you know, the largest semiconductor deal in the last three decades in California, it's a $100 billion company, and it's got a worldwide reputation. it's a hundred billion dollar company. It's got a worldwide reputation. It's a hoya, right? Like who, what? They went where? They went in the greater Sacramento? And, you know, we actually ended up getting $25 million in incentives from the state. But it's just, you know, great example, you know? You just keep swinging and grinding and then sometimes you win. And I like to tell you I can predict this, but I can't. But what's great about this is changed our reputation in Germany. And now 25% of the deals in our pipeline, look at us, are coming from Germany because a lot of these German companies will follow the industry leader into a market. So that's the beauty of Bosch, right? That's also zero-missions vehicle play. So we're starting to show, we're getting traction for jobs here in the region based upon the zero-mission vehicle. We got the university that flipped the narrative, right? They were in Davis. They saw themselves in San Francisco. Now they've flipped all the way into the urban corner. That's now a $1.5 billion investment, right, in the center. So the science and technology from UC Davis has gone from the Davis campus to Oak Park in the central city in Sacramento. So now the students and the faculty and the research is kind of in the middle of the urban economy. And those guys are going to go everywhere, right? You can't cite them. This is 25 acres. So, you know, they're going to go in the West Sacramento, you know, they're going to go in the Yuba City. They're going to go in El Dorado Hills. They're going to go through the entire region. And that was a big achievement. We also brought in a national developer, Wexford, on this. So these are some of our big objectives. This is tough. Um, you know, so Sac State's engineering school, any Sac State alum in the audience? There we go. Stingers up, baby. Um, so we have a 1960 engineering school. Mr. Vice Mayor, you're a university and city clerk. 1960 asbestos crappy engineering school. So we go to Luke Wood and like, hey, you know, like UC Davis just introduced an undergraduate business school. That's something behind it. If you can believe that or not, UC Davis has a four-year bachelor's degree in business for the first time in the history of the university. So these are little things that fall through the cracks that analysis tells us to push. So this zero-mission vehicle hub, you know, what if Sac State became an electrification engineering school? This is one of the projects we're out in the market. And I think this is a great example for Yuba and some of the communities out our way, Yuba City, you know, Marysville. You know, who'd ever thought Woodland would have been in a position to build a 350-acre research park, right? But the market's getting bigger, just like you're getting labor out this way. They're getting labor from Sacramento, but they're also getting a lot of labor from, from Berkeley and San Francisco. Then of course, you know, we landed the athletics. So we always like to say, we're not leaving, we're leading. This is important. If you, if, if you looked at the athletics, the national press, I mean, it was horrible. You know, that was the dumbest thing in the world to go to Sacramento. But what that's done is that's made, made us a certified Major League Baseball city and the owners bought it. So, um, I mean, you know, it's not, you know, and, and there's two things. One, the athletics deal in Las Vegas isn't going that great. But also, uh, Major League Baseball is going to do two expansions in 2028. So things like building that airport, how does that translate to Yuba City? It translates a lot because, you know, air service is critical to our competitiveness. You know, you might think Golden One, well, it's 40 minutes away, but it does a lot for our reputation. So a lot of these things, you know, how do we build our brand and reputation? And we're coming out with a branding campaign and, I mean, our reputation nationally is still lagging. You know, um, inside California, it's gone up. Nationally, it's still lagging. California reputation going down nationally. So, you know, we got a lot of work to do. Um, as I said, having the CEOs at the table are important. They're most proud of the fact that you're at the table with other communities because, you know, their, their initial opinion that political leaders would work together was low. And I told them it would be high and they said, I don't think you can get that done. And I said, you've obviously never tried to get a permit by yourself. It's kind of hard to do. So if you want water, sewer and roads, we better get these guys to work with you. And, you know, I'm really proud of, uh, you know, Mike Guyatt and all these different leaders that have really hung in there with us. And I'm also very proud of you. And I never take, um, support for granted, so I was happy to spend time today. And I'm grateful for the support, uh, that you've shown the organization. And I think we've had resounding success. We want to get better, like you've been successful. You want to get better. And it continues to be a grind and a long-term proposition. But what we've shown, you know, like with Solidigm going to Rancho Cordova, they're going to do an IPO next year. They'll be a publicly traded Fortune 500 company headquartered in, and their research in Rancho Cordova. And that's the first time in the history of this region. So it's everything from, you know, how dynamic your food processing corridors are. You know, your downtown felt like a little miniature metropolis to me. It was not very, not very trafficked when I would come out here in 2017, 2018. You know, two, you know, how do you get your reputation altered with a Major League Baseball team, uh, with 162 games a year? And then what are these universities doing? How are we changing workforce? Uh, we're also number seven in the country in entrepreneurship. I didn't put that in there, but, you know, in 2015, we had $15 million in venture capital. We've produced over $12 billion in venture money in this market in the last, last several years. So we're, these are all Brookings data, not mine, seventh in entrepreneurship. So, uh, a lot more work to be done. We got sustainability threats. California is going to struggle for the next five to 10 years. Um, you know, we got to bring wages up. A third of the people aren't in a living wage. We got to continue to increase, you know, capabilities, but we're very determined to do so. And, uh, I'll close by thanking you again for your support.
Questions, comments from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Broom. Um, a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Thank, um, appreciate you coming up and, and I wasn't with you today, but I do know spending the time up here is meaningful for us to know that you're spending the time up here. Um, I know you're not a real estate company per se.
Right.
But, you know, looking at the site, I, I look and I, I, I see, you know, properties listed on the GSAC site. How, how do those come about? How, how do, does that come from the entities, the cities, the municipalities?
Yeah. So what we do is so, you know, we were very transparent because, you know, I was talking with the vice mayor today, you know, we don't do favors for the CEOs. There's 48 of them. If you do favors for two, you got to do favors for 48 and it never ends. So the economic development directors are the domain leaders of their community, whether it's Yuba City or whether it's Roseville. And then what we do is those, those, that pie chart you saw where our deal is, about once every month or two, we get on and run through every kind of deal we have. And then when we get a deal that slacks us, so the goal for us is to get it shortlisted. Like can we get in the top five or top 10? Once we're in the top five or top 10, all, everybody gets the same RFI. All the local communities get the same RFI. Then your local economic developer packages your real estate options, sends it into us. And then we put a polished metropolitan recommendation to the company. So your economic development director would be the one doing that.
Okay. So we, we have a pretty marketable piece of property in the center of town called, it's the old Kmart property. It's not listed on your site. I'm wondering, how does that happen then? Are you saying it's our responsibility?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not, you know, I have 15 people. And we don't want to get, the one, the reason we work well with the economic development directors there, they run their town and they're very proud, you know, and they're very talented. So we don't come into Roseville and tell Dominic and their economic development team how to run their city. They do that. So if you have, if you have sites that you want marketed, you have to give those to us. And then we match those with different interests. Some of the things we do, you know, outside, like our advocacy work is, you know, we can bring developers into your community if you'd like our help with. So like in the case of Woodland, that's, that's 10 years out, maybe even 15. You know how long it takes to do things? That's 350 acres. We'll probably end up helping them recruit a developer more than helping them recruit a company in there. And then the developer will have to take over and start to build product over time. So if you've got a, an asset you want us to market, you got to provide it to us. And then we, we will put it on the site. And then when we have companies that shortlist, your economic development team presents that asset as your local community option.
Okay. In, in regards to, you know, I guess the, the selfish question is, what have you done for me lately? I've been with the city for 30 years, another five and a half now on the council. What, what's, what's GSAC done to me so that I can go to my constituents and say the return on the investment is this?
Yeah, your return on investment's really high. So the money doesn't come from...
Tell me what it is. I don't want to know that it's high. Tell me.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can walk you through it if, if, if you want. I can pull up another slide. I think I have it, if you'd like.
I, I think I've seen that we've spent over 200,000, um, with GSAC. I'm just asking, is anything been cited here other than, you know, a, a perception or a reality that we may have some employees that are commuting back and forth to Sacramento or Roseville?
That's a reality. And I can show you the reality on that. So we don't, we aren't a local sighting organization, right? We build the market. So you, you know, most communities, 70, like in, in Roseville's case, 70% of their residents work outside of Roseville. We're a jobs, we're a market, brand, reputation, and jobs program. Your local people are the, are the people that work the local market. So, you know, you know, Bosch chose Roseville. I didn't choose Roseville. You know, Solidigm chose Rancho. I didn't choose Rancho. I didn't choose Rancho. So we're not going to, you know, there's 22 communities and we don't have the, the leverage to engineer a location, you know? We can get them in the market, put them in. And then, you know, where your residents work, that's where you get the financial. So you get services you don't produce on your own, right? You're not going to produce a data set, right? Your team's not going to have that kind of resource. You're not going to pull data from multiple sources and benchmark it against Brookings. You get a brand and reputation play, right? You get our, you get access to that entire pipeline. Your economic development director gets coached. And then in your case, your vice mayor sits on the board with all the CEOs. And I, I, I can't remember your annual investment. What's your annual investment, Mr. Vice Mayor? 25,000, yeah, around 25,000. So that's the service, right? So just licensing one data point could be $100,000. And so if you look at how well your community's doing, that's because your metropolitan market's doing well. You know, and then if you want to improve a jobs, a housing ratio from your community, we can come out and advise and consult you on that, but your local guy's going to have to deliver on that. And, you know, we're in California. It's tough. So I think it's a good question. And, you know, I came out here to give you an hour, but unfortunately we weren't able to sit down. So I appreciate you asking a question. But these econometrics, they're the same things you're using when you float a bond or make a decision on a school levy. And they're really solid. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question. And I'm always happy to come out. So if you ever wanted to sit down, I'd be more than happy to come out and spend time with you. One of the things I talked to the vice mayor about, I think, you know, getting these ag players in a room could be very interesting. You know, I can help your chamber figure out how to build a relationship and network with them. And you're pretty built out. I mean, you're really, it's like Roseville. We've done a lot of good stuff in Roseville, but in two or three years, Roseville's not going to be able to cite another company. That's, Dominic will tell you that. So they're going to rely on Lincoln and Rockland and Sacramento and Woodlands' performance and other people to perform to keep the job base open for their community. And that's really, really, at the end of the day, that's what we're doing. How do we bring jobs in a community, level off the region? Yuba City residents benefit from the jobs. Yuba City benefits from the expansion and growth of the metropolitan area. And that's been evidenced by all your success.
One more question here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Barry, thanks for coming up and spending today. I think the time that we had after our initial lunch meeting was, was very valuable because you really got to see, you know, what our community is about, you know? Like you mentioned that Pluma Street is a lot different than it was five or six years ago. We got the DBA here and I know that, that they work towards that. We also talked about our industrial areas and food production and how ag is important up here. Um, I just want to recap a couple of things that we talked about today. Not, not so much in questions, but kind of expectations based upon our conversation. One of my greatest fears that we have, and I think it goes to my colleague's question as far as, I don't want Yuba City just turning into a bedroom community of Sacramento. I want to see our median income go up and I want to see the jobs be brought in. And, uh, but at the same time, we've got to maintain that balance between our ag community and our city. And we drove around the entire city. You see housing going in. You see places for, um, for industrial development, uh, possibly even more, you know, uh, food services, you know, like we was down along Garden Highway, those type of packing companies and such come in. What you had mentioned, and I would like to definitely pursue, is bringing parts of the board up here because I don't think in the last few years that I've been on GSAC that they've actually come into our town and, and been part of the city and finding out what Yuba City is about. I'd like for them to come up. And then, as you mentioned, get some of these out-of-area, you know, global type of investors that can come see the, the gem that we have. Because we can't keep tapping our same community leaders and businesses expecting them to grow the economy from the same dollar. We've got to have that infusion that comes in from an external source. And I, I think that is probably where the city and the council is coming from. We really just, as you said, we've done good, but I think all five of us have really high expectations.
Yeah.
That we really want to grow the median income. We want to make this a, a place that families want to be, that we still have that balance between, uh, a small community, but yet we have some of the amenities of the large. I realize that we get the overflow from Sacramento. It's a half an hour to the airport stuff. That's great. That's a great selling point. But my biggest fear is I do not want to become just another bedroom community. Our citizens deserve more. And so, uh, I really want us to work closely over the next year with, uh, with GSAC and our team to, to get that going. Because we want those, uh, those people coming in. And I want to go back to the Kmart building because we talked about that earlier. Is it our job as the city to list that since we don't own it? Because the Kmart building is owned by the county of Sutter. Or are we to be expecting them?
The, the local economic developers organize their towns.
Okay.
So if I'm doing something with El Grove, Darryl Dono organizes it. Alright, so I'll give you two cities that kind of outlier cities that work really, really well. Woodland, which has kind of been out, an outlier community. Rancho and El Grove, people never saw those communities as, you know, being frontline communities. And, you know, ranches and El Grove are on the verge of becoming really dynamic communities because they've worked really, really hard, you know, in economic development. So their economic development team organizes their community, right? They organize their incentives. We should probably have a conversation on what an incentive program might look like. They organize their buildings, their assets. And then, you know, the, and then we bring the companies into a funnel. And then that funnel goes out into the communities. And then, you know, those companies go through a criteria and they select communities. And I always tell everybody, a company goes where a community performs the highest. It doesn't, we know, it doesn't really go somewhere, which is why community performance is so important. I also want to just make sure we understand the relevancy of this because I appreciated the councilman's, you know, question. I mean, the fact that we've driven this airport up is a huge economic value to Yuba City. You know, so these assets are going to determine your total potential. And if these assets contract, you know, Sac State had an eight and a half percent graduation rate in 2015, it was worse than the United States. UC Davis was sending their kids to San Francisco and the airport was upside down. You're not going to grow Yuba City, Yuba County, Marysville or anything, right? You're not going to grow El Dorado County. You're not going to grow any of that stuff when your big assets are disorganizing and declining. And so I want to make sure, you know, you know, that we're delivering, you know, what our mission is, which is build and elevate those assets and give you an organization with a ton of capacity that you're 15% of the budget on. You know, that's a rare moment. You're usually the only dollar in the room. And then our job, you know, and I'm personally will commit this to you, is the support and consultations. You know, I love spending time with communities. So, you know, I'll come out here as needed and help you, but your chamber's going to have to organize those food and ag people, right? And then you're going to have to have a local economic development director that builds and organizes the real estate. And, you know, it's, it's tough sledding to get people into this region. I don't want to, you know, the one thing when I, my first three years of councilman, I didn't get my phone call returned. 2015, 2016, 2017, I did not get a return phone call. I made 2,135 presentations. I kept track of it between San Francisco and San Jose. And I never wiped that much spit off my face. Um, you know, we, we were coming from way back. And so, you know, getting this airport to be rated number one market-sized airport in the country, getting the airport to get a direct flight to Frankfurt, right? Which is one of the things we did in Germany with Bosch, that opens the German market for your ag community, right? Who knows what that is? Trade, you know? So it's a market exercise. It's not a business recruitment, real estate transaction exercise. That's a complimentary, you know, behavior. And obviously, you know, people get paid back from that. But what we do with the behavior of the market, the reputation of the market, how we elevate the market, UC Davis has completely wiped out their entire community, their entire internal organization to be a great economic development partner. You know, I was on the search committee to bring in a new chief innovation officer. They brought in a guy from a global vice president of research from industry. They're restructuring their technology transfer. That's going to be 10 times more impactful to the overall economy than whether or not it brings somebody in here. So I just want to make sure that, that, you know, the one thing I'm really transparent, this is what we're focused on. And then, you know, when I sit down with Woodland and help him recruit a developer for their research park or, you know, I coach, uh, Enterprise Rancheria and what to do with 300 acres, those are kind of consultation things that I do, you know, like Beal, you know, I've been in a lot of meetings with Beal. Those are just sort of consultation, support things that I do as a CEO for my communities. The bread and butter is, you know, can I get that third terminal at the airport? And can I get direct flights to Germany and Korea? Because now the Asian and European market open up through the region, you know what I mean? And then all of a sudden, we keep lifting the capacity of the region. Then our local communities are given a chance to grow inside that capacity. Prior to the organization, you know, running around with a bunch of little itty-bitty organizations and the, and the market was contracting and the assets were poorly behaving and they weren't working together. And so that's really the trick to rising this. And I want more too. You know, I mean, obviously I want more for everybody too, and we'll fight for it. You know, I mean, obviously, I want more for everybody too, and we'll fight for it. So we're on the same page, we'll fight for it, but I don't overpromise on what a role I can play if I, if I can't play it. And I want to make sure that, you know, I'm being transparent. And by the way, Yuba City was my toughest get to join the organization. So I had to drive out here six times, you know, you met your friend out there. We went to the event, went, and they would sit me in the back, and they'd run the whole council meeting, bring me up at eleven o'clock to pitch, and then they would table it, and then they'd bring me back. I came out here six times to get you to join. So, you know, people kept asking me, why are you going out to Yuba City six times to get those guys to join you? I'm, it's a five-point-two-million-dollar organization. So we're not a real region without Yuba City. Yuba City's a unique asset, and we need it.
Barry, I appreciate everything, appreciate you spending time with us today. I'm looking forward to engaging over this next year to really see how Yuba City can leverage that partnership because we definitely do want to see it grow. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you. Number six is Regional Waste Management Authority, SB thirteen eighty-three compliance update.
How's everybody doing? My name is Omie, I'm with Regional Waste Management Authority, coming in from Sacramento. And I'm here to talk to you guys a little bit about SB thirteen eighty-three, the new Senate bill in California, fairly new, and, um, you guys' compliance as a city. Go ahead and hit the next slide. So what is SB thirteen eighty-three? Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is a statewide effort to reduce emissions of short-lived climate pollutants by reducing organic waste disposal about seventy-five percent by 2025 and recovering twenty percent of edible food that would be, that would typically decompose in the landfill to insecure California residents. So ultimately, this legislation aims to slow climate change by diverting organic material from landfills. So local jurisdictions are individually responsible for implementing thirteen eighty-three. That's where RWMA comes in to assist. I want to be clear, Recology is not responsible for implementation of thirteen eighty-three as your hauler. However, their franchise agreement requires they collect waste materials and assist in specific areas like providing education and outreach, tracking and reporting data, and other things like that. So through this, though this is not their, um, sorry, though, though this is not their focus, as of 2024, CalRecycle is able to implement files for non-compliant, implement fines for non-compliance. Um, that's not really their goal as of now, as we're still in their early phases, so it's really more education at this stage. Go ahead to the next slide. Um, pathway for jurisdictional compliance. So how do we obtain compliance? By working to reach compliance with all categories listed in thirteen eighty-three. And this includes providing organic waste collection service to our residents and businesses, edible food, education and outreach, procurement of organic waste products, compliance and monitoring, as well as record-keeping. So we'll talk to you a little bit about collection. So as you know, all residential customers in Yuba City have organics collection services along with trash and recycling. For commercial services, compliance is about thirty percent of business, uh, thirty percent of businesses still require organics and recycling services. Thirty percent of the multifamily dwellings still require recycling, and about sixty percent require organics. So for, um, commercial businesses and multifamily dwellings, we offer exemption waivers upon request. The minimus waivers are for, um, organics that produce, or businesses that produce less than ten gallons of organic waste per week. And then we have our physical space waivers for space constraints, preventing bins from actually being properly placed. So a little bit more about the waivers and exemptions. Yuba City has six hundred sixteen exemption waivers on record as of right now. If you want to apply, you can find these waivers on our RWMA site. You submit them, um, RWMA will actually process and review the waivers for initial approval, will conduct inspections if needed, and then we send info to Recology to apply the exemptions to your waste accounts. Um, waiver exemptions are then recorded and finalized by the state or CalRecycle. So, um, a little bit more about edible food recovery. So thirteen eighty-three requires all jurisdictions to establish an edible food recovery program. Any business producing food is considered a generator, and generators fall into two categories, which are tier-one and tier-two generators. Tier ones include grocery stores, supermarkets, typically equal to or greater than ten thousand square feet. These typically have, uh, produce, fresh groceries, shelf-stable foods. Tier-two generators include large restaurants, health facilities with the commercial kitchen, large hotels, event venues. Tier-two businesses have more prepared food, prepared foods typically. And Yuba City has about one hundred thirteen tier-one and tier, tier-two generators combined. Um, a little bit over fifty percent do not have edible food recovery programs in place, um, which, again, RWMA steps in to help bring compliance. Um, how exactly do we comply with these edible food recovery, um, requirements from SB thirteen eighty-three and CalRecycle? So, working closely with Yuba Sutter Food Bank, um, and offering local and other local food recovery organizations, it is our job to work with the food bank and Recology to conduct annual inspections and verify all confirmed tier-one and tier-two businesses have written agreements in place with these food recovery organizations or the, um, Yuba Sutter Food Bank to make sure the food is properly being recovered. RWMA has secured grant funding to purchase software for the food bank as well as, um, trucks that are now being utilized. So, so a little bit about the education and outreach. CalRecycle would like to have a record of all education and outreach material. So here is listed a little bit of the, um, education outreach we've done with the RWMA. So this includes compliance letters to businesses, brochures, flyers, postcards. They've done some digital ads as well, including radio and TV. So with the education and outreach pushed out, Yuba City is considered compliant by CalRecycle. So recovered organic waste product procurement. So procurement has a few different branches. Um, one of them is the recovered organic waste product. The reality is when, um, CalRecycle, or when the state implemented thirteen eighty-three, I'm sorry, we needed a market for all the compost and mulch. I know there's a big ag community in Yuba City, which is really good. Um, the procurement target goal given by the state or CalRecycle is dependent upon the population of the city. So for Yuba City, the procurement target is five thousand tons. And, um, this recovered organic waste product can be used with, uh, by compost, mulch, renewable energy, um, from AD plants. There's one up in Oroville that is not owned by Recology, but, um, these are the type of facilities. In addition, electricity from biomass conversion. So there's direct-service provider agreements that allow us to contract others to use this compost and mulch and, um, be credited to our target procurement goal. Um, to the path to compliance for this, we actually partnered with Zero Food Print. Um, this is an example of one of the direct-service provider agreements where they accumulate the compost and then use it around the city of Yuba Cities for, again, whether it's development projects, giving it to, um, people who work in the ag field. Um, Recology, Austrom Organics offers a ten percent discount to customers that purchase compost, um, of the RWMA for Yuba City. And we are working with Recology to establish a more significant compost giveaway program for residents to utilize here in Yuba City. Um, paper procurement is another one of the branches of the requirements of thirteen eighty-three. So this will require, um, Yuba City to use thirty percent recycled paper content products, and that's for anything that's paper, file folders, um, printer paper, all the way down to toilet paper. So typically, um, coming from the city of El Grove, um, they use things like Blaisdell, Staples, all of those spaces to buy products. Now they all have green categories where it makes it very easy. You just want to try to find the things that are thirty percent, again, thirty, at least thirty percent recycled paper content. And this was put into place, um, I think in May twenty twenty-two. You guys actually already had a policy ensuring that your city facilities were, um, using recid, recycled content paper product. So compliance and enforcement. We are not compliant with the annual route reviews. Um, we're actually working with Recology right now to amend the franchise agreement that will, um, allow Recology to complete this requirement specifically. But the other enforceable mechanisms in place, like thirteen eighty-three mandatory organic waste disposal, um, reduction ordinance is in place here. We have the CalGreen compliance, the M-Wheelo or the Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, um, mulch procurement and recovered organic waste products as well. So penalties and fees are in place for violations, but again, with this, um, all of the cities now in California just trying to bring, come into compliance, this is not something that they are enforcing. It's more so in the education aspects, but they can, and ultimately, they want to move towards that. So record-keeping, um, all records are related to SB thirteen eighty-three are kept by the RWMA. These are files that we have to produce to CalRecycle on the state level each year in an annual report. Um, Yuba City is currently compliant with the record-keeping requirement. And overall, Yuba City is currently making significant strides to meet the SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. Um, Yuba City is in compliance review with CalRecycle. The RWMA and Food Bank are partnering on edible food recovery, so we'll be working really hard again to come to our tier-one and tier-two generators just to assist to, again, make sure that they have their written agreements in place with either the Yuba Sutter Food Bank or another local food recovery organization to make sure that edible food is being recovered and then later provided to Californians, um, in your city that are not food, are food insecure, sorry. And, um, RWMA continues to meet with CalRecycle reps on a regular basis just to showcase efforts towards compliance. And then I am open to questions regarding SB thirteen eighty-three and Yuba City.
Do we have any questions regarding SB thirteen eighty-three and Yuba City?
Through the mayor. Uh, I went to a biomass, um, symposium in, in winters here a few months back. And we've got a lot of biomass here, and we've got a lot of orchards. However, it costs more to transport that biomass than you get out of it when you take it to where you're taking it. So what's the solution here?
So, again, that would probably have to come through a direct-service provider to assist with transportation. I'm not going to sit here and tell you there is a solution. Um, with thirteen eighty-three implementation all around, it, it really has been, um, I think, an issue with the procurement specifically, like biomass electricity. I can tell you for sure, most cities in Californias have not, um, reached that target goal. And when you talk to CalRecycle about it specifically, they're more so looking for effort to just, to, um, efforts towards, towards it, not necessarily making the target goal. So as long as we're providing effort, I can't answer exactly what you're supposed to do for biomass electricity transportation. Um, that would be beyond me, but I, that's something that we can maybe look into.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any, uh, comment from public by chance? Nothing?
Through the mayor.
All right, yes, sir.
Uh, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I sat on the RWMA, and can you tell them what the plan is for going forward? Because we've been going through a CalCycle audit, and that was part of why, you know, we asked Scott to be here, and I know we had a previous engagement tonight. But what can our businesses expect? Because we are familiar with thirteen eighty-three, we have to have the diversion rate, we have to have the food recovery rate. It's been brought up at RWMA that Yuba City, because we're the bigger area, have the most non-compliance. So what is the plan to get us into compliance? Because there's a difference between meeting the mandate and just simply being in compliance. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. So, um, first of all, edible food recovery program, I think with the tier ones and tier twos, um, I have to go back in the slide to look, but you guys have about a hundred tier ones and tier twos altogether. That is not a huge climb for full compliance. I can also tell you, um, again, with previous experience working in cities doing this same thing, CalRecycle right now, I think, I, it's probably safe to say about seventy percent, seventy to eighty percent of cities in California are not reaching full compliance. So what we are going to do, first of all, is focus on the edible food recovery. I think the food generators are one of, um, on the list for the least compliant. And when you look at the, um, requirements for what makes a food generator, tier ones are pretty cut and dry. These are grocery stores, supermarkets, um, again, not a ton. There's a good amount, but that's, most of these guys already have their written agreements in place with food recovery organizations to recover that edible food. That's been going on at, with most grocery stores before thirteen eighty-three. So we're more focused on, um, again, the tier twos, and these are the larger health facilities, the larger restaurants. What we will be doing specifically is conducting inspections at all tier ones and tier twos. We'll also be capacity planning, working very closely with the Yuba Sutter Food Bank. That's the main food recovery organization that you guys have. Um, so building their capacity is a, is huge for us. As you can see, we've been raising a lot of grant funding to assist that. I know we, um, in recent meetings, they're, they were talking about, um, just their intake since thirteen eighty-three, more grocery stores are opening. So, again, working with the Yuba Sutter Food Bank more closely, I think bringing all the players together in this is also a huge one. So working with the city jurisdictions, the food generators, um, as well as the food recovery organizations like the Food Bank, other local churches, people who want to help recover the food is a big one. But we do have a food, um, edible food recovery program planned in place that will look like conducting inspections at each generator, um, making sure that we have written agreements on file if they do not already. And, um, that is going to bring us into compliance. Also with the multifamily dwellings, um, going to all the apartment complexes, that was also big on the non-compliant list, and making sure, um, even if we run into a lot of issues with thirteen eighty-three with apartments due to the trash enclosures, how they were already built, um, a lot of them just don't have enough space, and they don't have the money to just up and create new enclosures, make more space for more dumpsters. So sitting down with the apartment managers, um, letting them know their options. For example, if you just have maybe a few residential-sized bins at each enclosure, that will bring us into compliance because now we have all three waste streams rather than just trash and recycling. So, um, focusing on the non-compliant areas to bring us into compliance, I think, within the next year is not a, a large haul.
Okay. So just to be clear, who is going out to the few generators? Is it the RWMA staff? Is it Recology?
It's both. So Recology as well as the RWMA staff specifically.
Okay. And I know that we've had discussions at the board, and that's, that's why I'm trying to pull this out. Because it, it's, to most people, it's Greek, you know? They're like, thirteen eighty-three, we got to do this. But the main thing that we discussed at the board is the simple fact that we've got to get the right containers and the right ability to divert the organics and the food recovery and stuff before we ever get to, uh, full compliance, which is meaning we're getting the diversion down. So our first goal is really to get the right opportunity in the containers and such with the Food Bank to get this stuff to be able to happen, but then later to bring everyone into compliance. Am I correct?
Absolutely. So the, um, the residents, again, they have all three waste streams. What we're working with Recology to do right now is actually talk to the businesses, let them know exactly what they need to bring themselves into compliance. And then the next step is a mandatory bin drop, which is typically what happens. So we give, essentially giving the business an opportunity, educating them, reaching out to them, allowing them to, you know, call Recology, request what they need. But if they are not in compliance, we have a list of every business, we have all the Recology accounts, and we will execute mandatory bin drops for what they need. And they, we don't want to go that route, but that is essentially the final step, is a mandatory bin drop, and then receiving your Recology bill for the, whatever additional bins we provided.
Right, thank you.
No problem at all.
Making sure any public comment by chance, questions? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Hartman, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it. Moving on, item number seven, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? Let me read that whole thing. All right, so we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or moved from the consent calendar for individual action. Tonight, items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen will be voted on separately, kind of. Do we have any comments from the public on the consent calendar items? At all? Nothing? All right. So what we're going to do is we have recusals for item number fifteen, which are?
Uh, through the mayor. I need to recuse item fifteen as I own land within that area.
All right.
I have property down in seventeen, uh, item seventeen.
All right, I believe you're on fifteen as well?
Am I on fifteen as well?
According to my thing, you are.
I am?
All right.
Okay.
Through the mayor.
Wealthy landowner, you don't even know it.
He's got he's got so many, he forgot about him. Through the mayor. I need to recuse myself from item number sixteen due to property ownership, so I will not be voting on item sixteen.
All right. So when we when I call for votes on items eight through eighteen, when you guys say yea or nay, you will not be in your mind counting the items from which you've recused yourself. Got it? All right. Motion time.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar items eight through eighteen.
All second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? None. All right. For nineteen, business items, Pluma Street Trees, Highway twenty, Bridge Street, presented by Tim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tim Bybee, Superintendent of Parks and Grounds Department. I have with me Ernesto Hernandez. He is the Parks and Grounds Supervisor. We're here tonight in an effort to get direction on the next steps for the Pluma Street Trees. And also, I want to thank Matty LaFon for putting together our PowerPoint presentation. Appreciate that. As you can see on the map, the corridor between Highway twenty all the way down to Bridge Street, that's the the area that we're in discussion about. Ernie's going to actually do the background, and then I'll pick up after that.
Thank you. Little background and history on the corridor. There are eighty-four tree eighty-four sycamore trees on Plumas between Highway twenty and Bridge Street. The trees were structurally pruned at around the third year of age after they had been planted by the Parks Department. And continuing for the last ten years, we've always maintained the pruning of the bulbs and off the off the buildings, along with the fourteen foot easement for clearance for the main driveway and the seven to ten foot easement for pedestrians. Now they are reaching full maturity. They are causing damages. There has been some that have caused damages to the sidewalks, which then do lead into safety issues. Those are currently have been addressed. They have been removed. And the plans for the concrete are in motion for that to be addressed also. We immediately, according to an arborist's report in twenty twenty-three, each large tree will reach between thirty to twenty thirty to fifty feet, and currently the spacing is only at twenty-eight feet. So that's where that, let's say, this this got going in motion, because they need they act they actually need the space for their full canopy to be fruition and be healthy. Trees are we discussed back in twenty twenty-three to do the every other removal. The trees were meant to be removed in the late fall, early winter of twenty twenty-four. But the Parks Department went out and tried to balance and mark every tree to keep the street as balanced as possible, to present that to not only council, but the DBA, but all the community members. When we went when we met with the DBA, there was a bit of a mixed emotions of doing that much of a dramatic removal, pretty much would be, you know, taking half of the trees that were there. So, you know, we decided to slow things down through our director and just through communication amongst our departments. And Tim will present the other options, the options that will be will be presenting the options for the ongoing.
All right. So yeah, so when when we talk about the trees, again, the arborist report report is the one that actually came out and said that we it would be in our best interest to remove every other tree due to the inadequate spacing. So that was that was a big reason why we we brought it to the DBA. We started talking about it. We've realized real quickly that it was there was a lot of mixed feelings, and we felt like it was time to back out, understand where where how this came about, why it came about, and do a little more homework. So that's kind of the reason why we we started getting council involved a little bit, and and that's the reason why we're here tonight to get direction on moving forward. So when we talk about analysis, so option one, so option one, we reached out to a contractor, several contractors to get some some price quotes. So option one is to perform a class one pruning on all trees at a cost of around thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars. And that would also include an ongoing cost of thirty-one thousand two hundred every three to four years, with also these trees are going to continue to grow. So that price will most likely go up. As you can see here, what we did is in the middle, let's so in the middle right here, this is our sample tree. So we had Richard's Tree Service come out and do a class one pruning. What a class one pruning consists of is removing all the dead branches, decayed branches, just cleans it up, lightens it up, and it allows it to really flourish. So as you can see here as well, that's the tree before. That's the tree after on four twenty-nine. And then we took a picture today. So you can actually see that the tree is filled out really nicely. It looks healthy. And if we did that throughout the corridor, we would see a big difference in health and safety. We, you know, the branches wouldn't fall as much. A natural occurrence on trees is a chafing, which is going to be the pollens that fall. As we know, last year in the summer stroll, the pollen was severe. That was a big issue. It's a natural thing that trees do. There's nothing we can do to stop that. But if we went through and did the class one pruning, you would see that it would probably lessen it by a third, if not more. Option two would be to remove every other tree, perform class one pruning on the remaining trees at a cost of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, an ongoing cost of fifteen thousand six hundred for the remainder every three to four years. Option two continued. Once trees and stumps are removed, void will need to be addressed at an extra cost. Options include decomposed granite, a smaller tree, or actually filling it in with concrete. This staff's recommendation would be to move forward with the option one, to do the perform perform a class one pruning on all trees. And this will allow us time to work with the engineering and public work staff to come up with a an alter plan as far as what we're going to do to fill in those voids as the trees are removed. And as you can see here, I mean, it's kind of hard to see, trees removed. So we did this is this is from Highway twenty down to Forbes, and then over here, this is Forbes all the way to Bridge Street. As you can see, the trees being removed for phase one were in the purple down by Scott and Fremont Street. And I will have a I'll show you a photo of that next. And then the trees to remain would also be the ones in the green. And then also the yellow, the trees to be removed with option number two, these are tentative and can change. And that just typically, as Ernie said, to maintain the canopy, we want to do a good job as far as what selection we make on the trees. And then, as you see right here, the ones in the red, we removed nine of those, and those were the the safety issues. Those are removed and in the in the process of actually working with the contractor to get the concrete put back in and to to finish up that part. Fiscal impact ranges from thirty-one thousand two hundred up to thirty-nine thousand four eighty. Ongoing cost ranges from fifteen thousand six hundred to thirty-one thousand two hundred. Alternatives: Leave trees as they are and revisit at a later date. Recommendation: Receive options for Pluma Street Trees and provide direction to staff. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Great presentation. But just point of clarification, the the arborist's recommendation was to take out every other tree, and staff doesn't agree with that.
Yeah, it was an arborist report that came out in two thousand twenty-three. And we do actually have that report. And it was it was actually given to Rob and and Mr. McIntyre. And I do, we can provide that if we need to.
But but staff doesn't agree with that?
No, we we actually, because the arborist report came out from the professionals, we were like, you know what, this is something that this is the reason why this all came about was when we when we came on board, I'm new here in the department, Anne's new, this stuff was all in play already in motion. So what we did was just we were provided with this information, and that's the reason why we decided to move with it.
So that so the the arborist report was the impetus for this, but staff is recommendate the staff's recommendation is to not take out every other tree, but to do the trimming?
Staff's recommendation at this point is to allow some more time, but to go through and do the class one pruning. And that'll allow us time to work with engineering to gain more of a plan on the tree wells as we remove them, if that's the route we decide to go.
All right, thank you.
Little confusion, sorry.
Through the mayor. I just had one of those properties that I forgot I had. Two sycamore trees on our property over on Liveable Boulevard that are probably forty-plus years old. They are huge. They've got to be a circumference at least twelve feet around those trees. Are these trees going to get this big?
Well, and I would hope Diana or Ben could answer that, is they were part of the development when this all came about, if these are the larger sycamores, or do we do we know?
I could actually, the ones that you're probably dealing with are native sycamores, and these are these are not hybrids per se, but they're California sycamore. So they're I meant that's why the developers or the engineers picked those due to the fact that they're the max canopy on those will be between, I think, close to sixty, seventy feet, but that's the canopy. The girth of them should fit in the rings that are there, but structurally, I can't, yeah, promise that it won't get into the native oak. But they're not in the native, not oak, I'm sorry, native.
Thank you for the clarification, because you said sycamore, huh?
Like the ones at Hillcrest, those are natives.
Okay, yeah, yeah, they're massive. They're, yeah, and okay, all right, because you'd have to take them all out. Yeah, okay, all right, all right. So we're clear. All right, that's all I had.
One quick question is, if you guys happen to know, I'm just curious, we have these trees that are there when they when they get when they grow, the canopy extends, they're going to start choking each other out, basically. Was there any study or any recommendation or anything done before we even planted them? On that?
I don't know. Diana, can you? Do you have any comments on that?
It looks it looks like Councilmember Boomgarden is going to respond to that.
Yeah, this was this this and the palm trees down there were quite the issue as to what was going to happen. In my recollection, and please, this is fuzzy, I'm aged, was that was that they did feel at some point that there was going to be the need to thin out the the trees, but they wanted to overplant so that they could gain shade canopy as soon as possible for the street events. That's my recollection.
All right. So if that's the case, this is all part of the plan anyway, really? Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Appreciate it. Any comment from the public on this? Yes, sir. If you have to go to the machine over there, though, the microphone.
Okay. Yes, my name is Lawrence Mertz. I'm a Uba City resident. I've had trees all my life that had to be pruned and thinned out. And I really do feel that you should thin these trees out first and give them the opportunity to grow, to give yourself working time. When you thin a tree out, like the example showed here, it takes years for it to fill in again. It gives you time to work with it. The trees, no matter what you do with them, are going to continue to grow, and they will lift the concrete. My opinion is do thin them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mertz.
Good evening. My name is Bijan Parisgar. It's nice to be with you again. I think one of the questions, and thank you for all the work you've been doing on the trees. My question is, the original engineer, I remember when we opened up Pluma Street, there was a big festivities and celebration, and I kept looking at the trees. Are they? And I do remember that. These trees tend to be very large. One of the bullets in your presentation caught my attention as if that they are growing large enough that the sidewalks are being affected and cracked. So let's assume we take half of the trees out. That's not going to stop the growth of the other half that you're leaving, and you still are going to have the problem with the sidewalk. So that's not going to add, I mean, cutting half of the trees is not going to address the issue. And I think we need to go back to the original designer. And as Mr. Boomgarden mentioned, they wanted to have a shade as soon as possible. But you've got to look at these trees. They live seventy, eighty years. And now now it's we're revisiting the problem that we created ourselves so many years ago. So that's that's only that's my comment. The cutting of the trees will not take care of the cracks in the concrete, because they're going to still continue to grow. And it looks like maybe pruning the trees might be a solution for now, for the next three to four years. That would be my observation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Sandy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sandy Drown, and I'm with the Uba City Downtown Business Association, and I also have Natalie, who's also a board member with me here. And so I own the Happy Viking, and you own Natalie. What do you own?
My name is Natalie Severson, and I own Natalie Severson Photography on Pluma Street.
Perfect. And so, yes, the trees have, we want to thank Parks and Recs for all of the due diligence of having a lot of conversations coming to our meetings, and it has been a very mixed reviews, as you could say. A lot of people have a lot of opinions about the trees and what we should be doing. I do know that we did a survey to try to catch back up to the recommendation from the city. And the survey that we just recently did did not pull enough for us to really say that the majority of the downtown members really wanted us to go to a certain or wanted to go to either option one or option two. So but I do appreciate these conversations and all the hard work that we've had. I know that we had a new director come in as well. So I'm glad that we slowed down for a second to kind of reset and figure out what we want to do. So but we do appreciate them for the summer strolls and the Christmas strolls. So there is a lot of that with the trees that has been a perk to being able to throw those events that bring ten thousand people down to our city. Do you want to add anything else?
They're great. However, they're a mess. My concerns as a downtown business owner, we have so many people from in town, my own clients, I get worried for safety. I watch branches fall. They are not small. They are very large, and they can definitely do damage to people. The leaves, the pollen, it's it's this city does a great job. You guys do so good on keeping it clean. Like the gentleman mentioned, the sidewalk lifts down by Scott Street where my studio is somewhat on the south end, it is lifting. It's definitely a safety concern. And then the other thing is that you guys mentioned about the the beautiful brass encasings of the trunks of the trees. Some of the trees are healthy and actually fill the whole thing up, which I have a feeling some of them are going to start getting choked out and just starting to grow around the brass inserts. Some of them aren't even close to the inserts. So it the the degree of health for the trees is so drastic up from the north side of the well, from the twenty down to Bridge Street. Since being on the street, the trees are always a hot topic. And so hopefully, we can kind of go forward. And I know Sandy Sandy has HVAC system. I do not in my studio. I know there's different levels that they deal with the pollen and the trees within their within their business, keeping their units actually working. The trees, you know, so it's it's thank you for the input, and hopefully, we can kind of go forward and get a good idea of what to do with them.
So again, as you can feel, there's a lot of opinions on the trees. This is our front yard for the Uba City Downtown This is our front yard for the UVA City Downtown Business Association, so good luck, Council.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amrin Beth, and I actually serve on the Parks and Rec Commission. So I have a question. I know you guys don't have a firm plan yet, but let's just say all the trees get taken out? Because I do know that we have a citywide tree expansion plan that's going on right now. Like, there will be allocators elsewhere in other parks or neighborhoods, maybe? Is there like a plan for that?
So are you referencing to if we removed all of them?
Yeah.
What would be the plan to put back there?
Uh, no, not there, like anywhere else inside the city, throughout the city.
So... Are you, are you, are you asking about like the urban master plan?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and that's just to sustainability of canopy and continuous growth.
Got you.
So we will, we will always try to offset any tree we remove, even if it's from Downtown Business Association. But the downtown business is more infrastructure-based, where we would be making that decision of removals. Not so much for the canopy, but due to the fact that we are also managing the master plan, we will have to strategize for that, those, those removals that will either go into, we could go into the Parkway. We could, we have various steel land that we could drop the trees that are technically, would have to be removed due to infrastructure.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we can bring it back to Council for discussion.
Through the mayor. Thanks for the presentation tonight. You know, it's, I've been removing a lot of trees back on our ranch. I mean, last year we removed fifty-seven, to be exact. And what I've learned over the past couple of years with working through this is when you cut them completely down, you gotta wait for them to grow back. And, but it's amazing when you start trusting the professionals, which I consider you guys professionals and the Arbors we're working with professionals, what you can actually turn things into. Our downtown area is, you know, becoming, as you heard Barry talk earlier, the difference in it and others. That's one of our showpieces. We want people to go down there and enjoy things and feel safe, not get, you know, attacked by birds, more or less, if that's a nice way of putting it with what they drop, not having a limb drop on them. And so, you know, I think first of all, we need to listen to you guys, and we need to listen to the Arbors. The first thing that he said and you guys said is properly, you know, prune them and get these canopies like they need to be. So I think that is really step one. And then maybe a step two, and again, we're dealing with a lot of mixed emotions down there. And it's amazing, you're hearing the concept, oh, we're gonna get rid of every other tree, and it's like, oh my God, don't get rid of the trees. But once we go down and prune them back, then it might be, holy crap, we just realized, this is really what needs to happen, because you start seeing how they're gonna redevelop and grow. So I like the approach you guys brought forward myself, and let's do a real pruning down there. That is gonna solve a multitude of issues. It's gonna cut with the debris from the trees. It's gonna cut with the safety, as Natalie was talking about with branches falling. Hopefully, it's gonna get some other freaking crows out of there and get them, you know, where you live, Mayor? We'll send them your way. I'm kidding. But it, it has the potential to solve a lot of problems on the surface, and I think it allows us also to let that work with our businesses down there to get an understanding of where we're going, because what we still want to have is a streetscape. We're investing a lot of money down there. I mean, we just did the bus tour, two-point-two million dollars was the Clean California grant. The water tower, the murals, the expanded park, the lights on Center Street. This was envisioned, Mark, how many years ago did we do this? Twenty years ago plus? Yeah, long time ago. They were spatially challenged, I guess, back then, because we know where we're at now, but it's twenty years later. So I think a metered approach to this is going to be good for all, and we may end up exactly where the Arbors say, and taking out every other, but I think it will soften the blow with some of our businesses and the concerns to see what we're really trying to do, what's in the best interest of everyone. Because I'll be honest, Sandy, when we go down there, the trees right now, I just have to know the storefronts, because I can't see the signs for the businesses because they're covered by the trees, you know? And we really need to lift those guys up and thin them out, and I love what they did with the, the test trees. So I think we need to have a metered approach on that, and I appreciate the work you're doing. And let's see where it lands. My only question for you would be, because we are coming into the hot season, if we were to take action tonight and say, you know, do the trimming or do the trimming and the removal, whatever we decide to do, when would that start? Because it, it might get too hot all of a sudden for us to even do a proper pruning of those. Can, can you tell me when this might happen?
Yeah, I actually was speaking to the contractor himself and Arbors, and the window of time is between June and August, that they would schedule the work to be done. But they also worry of how much stress you could put on a tree when your foliage is already out, it's already trying to, you know, maneuver itself again with the, you know, the seasons. So a dramatic pruning like that, at this stage of where it's at, it can stress a tree and cause potential, you know, disease, blithe, so on and so forth, so. Our window, which was where there was no foliage, is obviously closed. But, you know, with how well Richard works, you know, Richard's Reservices, I mean, I do trust them. If we do move forward with Class One pruning, they may not go as severe in the thinning, but they will address all dead and structural.
Okay, so we may be looking at really the fall for the true pruning, but we can address some of the safety issues at this point, is what I'm hearing correct? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through the mayor. Oh, thanks. A couple of things. Number one, I'm, I'm in favor of your pruning option. I think that's, trying to keep this thing moving along. Second thing is, is I know you have a good working relationship with the DBA. I'm just, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more information about what time of day. Have you, have you researched that at all? We don't want to impact the businesses too much? And any pedestrians or anything else down there?
Yeah, with, with the Class One, they, with the sample trees that they did, Richards did, on the north end of the corridor by in front of Twin Cities Flooring, they, they kept the flow of traffic. They were out, they started right at six-thirty, they were out by eleven. Still keeping as much flow as possible. That is the most kind of congested, because it's come, coming literally out of the main fairway, which is Highway Twenty. So they were able to not have any issues with that, and that would be their structure moving forward. And it'd be about a ten-day process. That way they don't keep bottlenecking, you know? And they would do what they can every five-hour blocks and then move forward. That's why they gave us a ten-day bid on it.
I appreciate that, and as expected, you're way ahead of me. Thanks.
Through the mayor. Having navigated those two trees that I just did, it was a safety issue with my neighbor. He was concerned as well as I, because I hadn't done anything with him in twenty years. And I am concerned about what we did to him. We did a Class A. I mean, they, they took the canopy out. I'm in favor of doing the, the Class A pruning of the trees and getting a handle on it, but diverting it, waiting until it's time to prune and not do it now, because you would be jeopardizing. I'm worried about that right now with those two big trees. They've been there, like I said, forty-plus years. And running your numbers you just had, you got a smoking deal on that, because I paid double what you just said. So I'm in favor of it.
All right. Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna have to respectfully maybe disagree this one time. I, I think we ought to stick with the Arbors' original assessment of this. What I'm hearing is the, the sidewalks are, you're, you're currently having issues with the sidewalks right now. Rather deal with it now than in three or four years when we revisit. And I, I, it just sounds like we're, we're kicking the can down the road. And with the, with the additional expense that we're gonna have to do if we decided to trim them again in the next three, four years, at a minimum, you give the crows half the amount of space to, to perch for the night. So I would be in favor of, of, of going with the Arbors' original recommendation.
Pressure's on. You know, I, I came in here today with thinking that I was leaning toward removing the other one roughly and then pruning the rest, right? However, Mr. Vice Mayor, you, you, you made, you're the first one that spoke, and it made sense to me as to maybe we, we trim them back. We're gonna trim them anyway. And, and if it happens to work out, maybe have, slow some progress, get a slower roll, we, we, we maintain the aesthetic we have of, of those trees, because once they're gone, they're gone, right? And when we replace them, so if we wait, we're gonna, every annual, annually, it's gonna be roughly the same cost anyway. So I don't really see a harm in writing, trimming them up, seeing, seeing how that works out, and then moving on, because we can always cut them down later, but once we, if we do it now, that's it. Unless and until it becomes a safety issue, and I saw some red dots over there, so definitely a safety issue. If it becomes cost prohibitive to repair sidewalks and, you know, again, like, like Wade says, we're just kicking the can down the road, otherwise we may as well just do it. But I don't think any of us would be in favor. I don't think anybody would be in favor of removing all of them. So we, we, we can't do that. So eventually, we're gonna have sidewalk issues anyway. It's just that how many will it be? So that would be my inclination, even though I did come in here thinking we need to cut down half of them. Makes sense, because if they're, if the, if they're choking each other out, then what's the point? We, we just do it, right? But there, it sure does look nice when they're all doing their thing up there, so. That would be it. So anybody else have any other?
Yeah, real quick, through the mayor. You know, the architectural firm that designed the street was from San Francisco, and it was Friedman, Tung, and Bottomley were their names. And my guess is that, and based upon all the controversy about all the trees down there way back when in this chambers, my question for you all was, if you're removing trees because of concrete lifting, et cetera, which is a citywide problem, by the way, as you well know, what's, what, what's out there? Who can we, who can we go to to find out what would be an acceptable replacement, rather than just start concreting over everything? Because eventually, you know, you're gonna have to have shade down there for these signature events that the DBA puts on for us. So I, I, I don't, I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but I think, you know, going back out there and figuring out if there's some hybrid something or other, or something that UC Davis has come up with, or, or something, you know, as we move on down the road to, to perhaps address Councilman Kirchner's concerns as well. I mean, we just can't have a blank street. That won't work.
Mark, I have something on that. So, you know, when we start talking about removing every other tree, you know, again, if we slow this process down like we have, it gives us an opportunity to work with engineering and, and staff and to figure out what direction we want to go. That's the reason why the staff's recommending the Class One pruning temporarily. They need it anyways. So I, I really believe that we're gonna get the best of both worlds with that. And, and the concrete issues, I think this is gonna be an ongoing issue, because again, these trees are gonna continue to grow. We're gonna be visiting, revisiting this as they pop. We'll be out there, we'll be working with the Streets Department to, and Public Works to make sure we, we resolve these issues before they become, you know, a lawsuit. That's our hope. So, thank you.
All right. Motion time? Or do we, is this a motion or a direction? Good question. Direction. So you have your direction.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, if I may, please?
I know I remember the public comment.
But just so I'm clear as to what the direction is from the consensus of the council, that is to engage in Option One as recommended by staff. Is that correct?
Yes, prune them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
You guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good job on that presentation. Item number twenty is Fire Station Number Two Dorm Room Expansion Project Award.
All right, so maybe not as exciting as sycamore trees, but this is a big deal. Okay, so I'm here tonight. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. So this item is in regards to the expansion of the dormitory at Fire Station Number Two. And so sixteen forty-one Gray Avenue, North Gray Avenue, there is the existing fire station. And what this project proposes to do is add a dormitory area and, and a remodel to the backside, to the east side of the fire station there. So if you can see in that picture, it's a little tight. Here's a, a quick screenshot of the plans. It kind of talks, you know, the bedrooms, the bathrooms, and a laundry room. Basically, the project is a thirteen-hundred-square-foot dormitory addition, three dorm rooms, one laundry room, two unisex restroom shower areas, one storage room. And so then new, so a little bit of remodel with some new tile, vinyl flooring, cabinet lockers, and some perimeter hardscaping with ADA accessibility. So there's some work that was not with this. I'll go through the timeline. With the costs and with the need of that facility, it's been broken out into, in small projects over time. And so with this, there is a need also for some fire system alerting, sprinklers, communication systems, where there was a thought that maybe it was gonna handle them with a separate contract or individually, but that is additional work that needs to be done, that we're planning on handling through contingency that I'll talk about. And so, quick timeline, this, this station, and the fire chief is here. Definitely could add some discussion about the history and the need and the use of the facility. Real quick, forty years old, recent renovations started back in 2013 with some exterior ADA improvements. We're done with some CDBG funds. There was also, you know, some work that was done through, you know, let me work through the timeline here. And so you had the ADA improvements around 2015, then we had a design of the dormitory project. Council approved the plans in 2019. With that, there was, there was only two bids, and the bid was nearly two million dollars, and it was not awarded. And so then we did, we broke down, we, we reduced the scope and went back out, where we did a kitchen remodel with some budgeted funds, and then there was a turnout gear building at it with some 2022 CDBG CV funding that was available to provide some additional space. And then this dormitory addition, so the project was re-scoped and then put out the bid last May, almost over a year ago, with two bids received, and they were forty percent over the engineers' cost, and we let those expire. And so, so there's a long time coming. So we sat on these bids, we sat on that project scope, and we thought the bid environment was a little bit better this winter, and we put it out. And so with this recent rebid of that project, we got six bidders with a project price that was actually less than it was a year ago. So the apparent low bid is UBC, United Building Contractors, nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, seven-hundred-two dollars. With this, we're asking for some contingency. So when you get into an old building, you've got some dry rot, you have some tie-in issues. You don't know what you're gonna run into exactly. And then also, we have some of the additional scope where there needs to be a special inspector because of the facility type, and then also to add that sprinkler communication line and that sprinkler stuff. So we're asking, not, and more than our typical fifteen percent, we're looking for about twenty-five percent to make sure we handle that. And then construction management by city staff, and then special inspection, what I talked about here, required for California Building Code. And with that, we obtained some quotes for what the cost was. The schedule is for this summer and into the fall. That pencils out to about one-point-one million, and, and we need a little bit more money. And so with that, we need about a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars more money, more additional funding. And so the concern is, is that if we kick the project down the road, inflation, you know, with construction, I think we've hit a little bit of a lag this last year, where it's not going up at that eight percent, you know, ten percent, four percent. We were seeing some astronomical inflation over the last few years. And if, if, the feeling is that we got good bids, tight bids, they were all within, real close with each other, six bidders, that if we wait, you're just gonna see that hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand turn into two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in another year. And so with that, the recommendation from staff is to allocate- And so with that, the recommendation from staff is to allocate funds from unallocated general fund dollars to the budget to get it done, and then hopefully, really project manage it to minimize those contingency funds. And so with that, staff tonight is recommending A, B, and C to award the contract to UBC to authorize a professional services agreement for the special inspection, and authorize the finance director to make the supplemental appropriations. Fire Chief Alexander is here, if there, myself, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? All right. Counsel.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
25% contingency, it seems large.
It is, and so 200,000, 250,000. We've been kind of ballparking some of these needs for that additional work to run the communication line. We're sitting about, I think it was about $75,000 for the fire sprinklers and then the fire communications, and then with that, that would leave us about the 15% standard amount, and so it is large. The worry is, if we don't put it in there and we hold it back, I might be in front of you or kind of midstream here in the next month or two, asking for more money, you know, mid-project. And so that is where we're at, but we're pretty, you know, I had the team run the numbers, what they think the cost was, they thought they were pretty comfortable on the cost, what the additional work was, and then having that 15% for a little bit of fluff if we deal with some problems.
Would you celebrate if you come in under that and let us know?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I guess this would be for potentially Chief Alexander. First of all, I mean, we need to do this, so that's not a question. The second all is, our firefighters have done a heck of a lot of work on their own at Station 2. They've painted, we've done other things, but they really pour their heart and soul into their firehouse, I want to commend them for that. What don't we know, back to the 25% that, you know, Mark brought up, have they run into anything that we just don't know about down there that, you know, brings that in? Because, you know, Ben, you're talking about, you know, comm lines, is that, I can run a hell of a lot of comm lines for $50,000, and that's where I'm kind of perplexed. Is there something we don't know, or is this just Bidenomics at, you know, 20% inflation?
So we've noticed a couple things, especially during the kitchen remodel, things that caught our attention, especially when we were trying to pull out a wall in regards to shoring up a header. So there's some older construction there that we need to work through. But in regards to your exact statement, yes, there is a concern that we need to work through. Our alerting system company that we have for our stations is out of business. And so seeing how to expand that alerting system, especially into the dorm area, it has potential to be challenges. Instead of rewiring the entire system, we're not really quite sure what that's gonna look like, having to do an alarm system, especially just for the bedrooms. And so that is an area we need to focus on.
Okay, that answer, I just knew there had to be something for that going, and so I appreciate it.
I would just add that engineering and the fire department has been scratching their head for the last few years that just a 1,300 square foot addition is a million dollars plus. And so just the cost of labor, cost of materials, being a special facility, public stuff, the prices seem to keep coming in high.
You have a comment? Comments? All right. We do need a motion on this one.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Chief, I was gonna make a joke when you were stepping up, so, but I backed off. I move that we adopt staff's recommendation and adopt the resolutions A, B, and the direction for finance on item C.
Second.
All right, first and second, to approve staff's recommendation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, nothing? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Kind of curious, with the fire alarm, who do you guys call? Nothing, just kidding. Welcome, Lieutenant. Let me hear about the Flock cameras, huh?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Brent Slade with the UBA City Police Department, I'm here to talk about entering into a memorandum of understanding with Sutter County and a master service agreement with Flock Safety. So in April of 2024, Chief Baker was able to secure funding from the Sutter County Community Corrections Partnership, for the purchase and installation of 25 Flock LPR cameras. As you can see, through collaborative measures with Sutter County, we've decided to, that the split will be 13 will be placed in city jurisdiction, and then 12 will be placed in Sutter County jurisdiction. So a little backstory, so the CCP's main focus, it was actually funded through the AB 109, so deals with rehabilitation, but some of the caveats to that is that CCP operates on a collaborative model, bringing together various stakeholders from law enforcement, the judicial system, social services, and community organizations. And again, all this funding on a reimbursement level is funded through the CCP program. A little bit on Flock Safety, so Flock Safety are LPR cameras, they are not live surveillance cameras, per se. What they do is, they help crime prevention and assist with investigations. They're data collecting cameras that collect crime or patterns of vehicles that come into our community. Or the other caveat to that is as well is, if we decide to, the council approves this, and we do go with Flock, that we then have access to any other Flock cameras used in California. So Yuba County has a bunch, the Sacramento area has a bunch, this will help with crime prevention techniques with all the thefts and all these high-end thefts, by picking up those cars as they enter into our community. The data is very restricted, it's to only people that are allowed, which is law enforcement level, and again, it collects the data analytics from our cameras as well as any other Flock cameras that we have access to. So some of the MOU, some of the benefits of the MOU builds upon the collaboration approach between the city and the county by facilitating the sharing of data and resources. This collaboration could lead to more effective crime prevention and investigation efforts. It also allows the integration of data from multiple sources, enhancing the ability to analyze crime patterns and trends. It builds upon the trust in the community by demonstrating the commitment the city has to collaborate and share resources with allied agencies and to provide a safer community. The MOU ensures that all parties adhere to the relevant laws and regulations protecting both the agencies and the public. So staff's recommendation, there are several of them, is to accept the funding from the CCP in the amount of $256,250, authorize the purchase and installation of 25 Flock cameras, authorize the execution of the MOU with Sutter County, and authorize the city manager to execute the MOU on behalf of the city, and authorizes the chief of police to enter into an MSA master service agreement with Flock Safety. Some alternatives, we can reject the funding from CCP and then find alternative crime prevention methods.
No question, Mike? Oh.
Yes. So you mentioned Yuba County, so if they have an incident in Yuba County, would they be able, then I go dispatch to dispatch, I'm assuming, to, in our system, so that if somehow or another they got over into Sutter County or Yuba City, we could assist them? Is that how this system would also work?
Correct. So basically what happens is, if there is a license plate or description, because, excuse me, it picks up, you can enter in, excuse me, certain vehicle descriptions into this system, you know, if it has certain wheels, certain features that stand out above any other vehicle, they enter it into the Flock system, and then when it comes into our jurisdiction, if a Flock camera picks it up, then it will notify us that that vehicle matching that description has entered into our jurisdiction. And then it'll give us the directions of travel, and then hopefully, we'll be able to track it, depending on where it goes, through the Flock cameras.
Excellent. So the other question I had was, then, who's entering the Flock information? Is it the officer through his MDT, or is it through dispatch?
Dispatch. So we're gonna have, so the part of the process is the training and education through Flock, and we're gonna have several administrators that'll be able to enter in this information, of course, some of those being dispatch, CSOs, and certain officers within the organization.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Mark, I went down to Loomis when they had the League of City thing, and they gave a presentation on this Flock, and he gave us a real-time case that had happened two days earlier, that they solved in a matter of days for a shooting, and they caught it two counties over, I think, caught the individual. So I was impressed, and when I saw this, I went, okay, this should be happening, because I've seen it in action, and it actually worked really well.
So are these are, are they stationary cameras we place? Is there a photograph or anything available, what they look like?
So, I mean, I don't have one on hand. They're very small, they're almost like our traffic signal cameras.
Oh, okay.
About that size. What we're doing now is, we're in the placement portion of trying to figure out the best geographic locations to put these, and to save time, because if we end up putting them on state property, it's six months to a year to get a encroachment permit through them. So we're trying, those places that we have determined, we're trying to move it back on the city property, so we don't have to wait six months to a year to implement some of these cameras.
All right, thank you. All right. Public comment?
I was looking at the, I was trying to research the cameras that you're suggesting, it certainly seems there are some real benefits to it. What caught my attention is the cost, it looks like $2,500 a year per camera, it looks like it's an operating cost, the installation cost seems to be $250. And I'm a real layman when it comes to this, I was wondering if you can help explain where the money goes, or how does this happen? $2,500 per camera per year seems quite high. So what is the real cost?
Are you good with that? I mean, is that a question you're okay with answering right now?
I don't really know what he's trying to ask.
Okay.
Are you wondering where the money's coming from, or are you?
No, the cost of the cameras. This is just from the internet. The Flock Safety Falcon camera is $2,500 per camera per year, with a one-time $250 installation cost.
I don't think that's anywhere in this presentation, is what it?
No, it's not.
And keep in mind, appreciate it, but this is comment, not necessarily question, and if it's a question, we want to be able to answer your question, sometimes it takes some preparation time to look things up ourself, particularly about something that wasn't in the presentation. We have a total amount of money that we're going to either approve or deny here in a second, but did you have another, a comment about the whole thing, or the program itself?
No, that was just a comment, that looks like there is a big difference between installation and the actual cost of these cameras. And I was wondering where the discrepancy is, or why.
Well, one's the equipment and one's the installation, I believe is what I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Probably.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Two different numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
All right, you bet. Anybody else? All right, bring it back.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we accept staff's recommendations of A, B, and the resolution identified under A, under item 21, if the city attorney is okay with that.
Through the mayor, so just to be clear, adopt resolution A and B, but not the second resolution for A?
No, it was all of them. I was trying to be inclusive.
Okay, thank you. So it'd be adopt both resolutions, including A, B, and A?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, you have us, thank you very much. City Welcome Sign Ad-Hoc Committee, follow-up.
Good evening. So tonight, I am going to be giving a follow-up of the City Welcome Sign Ad-Hoc Committee. My presentation will be brief, as I want to, you know, allow the council members who are on the committee, Councilmember Kirchner and Councilmember Pascuali, to give their remarks on the committee. So a bit of brief information, the city welcome signs on the south side of town, south of Boge, and on the west side of town, around Township, were removed due to disrepair. And so in an effort to enhance the quality of life, excuse my typo there, we went through a process to design new signs. So a bit of background, the Call for Artists was released in December of 2023, where we invited artists of all types to submit conceptual designs. Then the design competition was closed in February, and a presentation was given to council to establish an ad hoc committee to review the design submissions. In April, the ad hoc committee met to review the 10 submissions. And this is a two-part design process, so the design concept competition is phase one, phase two would be our request for proposal, or an RFP, and actual installation and fabrication of the sign that's selected. So the ad hoc committee held in April consisted of Councilmember Kirchner and Councilmember Pascuali, as well as commissioners from the city's Planning Commission, Senior Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and the Youth Commission. And as I mentioned, there were 10 submissions, and the ad hoc committee reviewed the submissions based on a number of criteria. The highest score was 60, and each design was scored by each member of the ad hoc committee. This is just a sample showing the scoring sheet. The ad hoc committee selected three finalists based on that scoring sheet. And here on the slide, I've shown the three finalists that were selected. Submission number five, I'm always bad at this highlighter, submission five is outlined in blue. Submission eight is outlined here in this sort of greenish color, and submission nine in orange. You can see the different front and back alternatives, or different alternatives for the submissions are shown here. So I'll quickly run through the different submissions, some information that the artists provided about their design concept, and then some of the feedback provided by the ad hoc committee. So this is from the artists for submission five, talking about why they selected the colors and the design, et cetera, that they selected, and wanting to tie into existing city branding. Some of the feedback from the ad hoc committee were that it might be difficult to see these lighter colors on a fast-moving roadway, such as Highway 99 or Highway 20, and feedback regarding the Sutter Butte concept in the background, but maybe exploring ways that the outer ring is either a darker color, or even lit up in some way. Submission number eight, shown here, the artists for this submission included a lot of comments that are available in the staff report, and I noted here about the plinth design. To be honest, I didn't know what a plinth was at first, it was kind of like an arrowhead shape. So you can see here, the top-down view shows this kind of arrowhead look within the Yuba City, cut out of a metal material. Some of the feedback from the ad hoc committee was general impressed with the level of detail in this design, however, concerns about not being able to see that detail when you're moving, you know, 60 miles an hour down the highway, and potentially some concerns with the metal top being relatively easy to damage. Submission number nine, shown here, the artists mentioned the reasons why they designed it the way they did, one of which wanting to tie into existing city branding, and the Yuba City kind of curve, they noted is based off of the river, which I thought was kind of unique, based off the river curve. Some of the feedback was, the ad hoc committee liked the simplicity of the design incorporating city branding, and then... to the top, so it's more welcome to Uba City in regard versus Uba City welcome. There was a discussion about front and back, if that would be desired or not desired, and then liking the idea of using the cut-out kind of channel letters, similar to what's at Highway 20 and Stabler Lane in that little mock orchard corner element. We reached out to a contractor to get estimated cost for these finalists. So here you can see submission number five, this is a rough estimate, is around $40,000. Submission number eight, $60,000, and submission number nine at $30,000. At this time, staff is requesting direction from council regarding which of the design concepts should be continued in the design cost and analysis process to prepare for bid and construction. And I did want to note that in 2023, the city received a grant from SECOG, the Community Design Grant, in the amount of $100,000 for the city welcome sign project. So there is grant money for this, for this project. Alternatives would be to direct staff regarding which design concept should be continued in the process, or provide staff with an alternative design concept that has not yet been developed and/or analyzed. And I recommend that staff receive this presentation, discuss, and provide direction to staff. Thank you.
Quick comment. Are any of these lighted at night?
Yes, there is existing lighting there. So in the call for artists, we left it kind of open to the artists to indicate if they want to use the existing lighting or not. And I will note that these submissions we received, these are local artists, a lot of times young, high school students. And so, we didn't require an extreme level of detail, right? This is a concept. If the council would like to proceed with one concept over another, we would be going through a full design phase, and getting into the details of the lighting is something that we could do.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before I comment or we go to the public, I would be curious if the ad hoc committee has anything that they would like to add beyond the presentation.
Yeah. A lot of the concern that was the materials that were going to be used, trying to stray away from the acrylic plastics and such, which deteriorate. I know I had a conversation with Ben, I expressed that it'd be metal, stone, these types of things that would be more durable over the years. That was a big concern. That's about all I've really had a real concern with as far as, the design, I think, are fine, that they would get the job done. And then there was also, Natalie, there was, we were thinking of getting away from the monument style and having more of the, what was that one design that looks like they're on Stabler and 20, where it's more of the font of the city and the such is the sign, instead of having a monument-type sign. What do you recall, Wade?
So, thank you for that very thorough presentation. A lot of the stuff I was going to talk about, you've covered, so you did a great job. Thank you for that. And for city staff to tackle this one. I think all of us, at some point or another, have been approached by somebody in the community going, hey, what is going on with those signs out of the highway? And I'm glad that we were, first of all, that we received that grant and we're taking advantage of the opportunity. I think the idea is to hopefully utilize what's already in the ground in both those locations, and integrate one of these designs that have been offered. The different designs that were brought forward from the community were great, weren't they? As part of the senior commission, you were in there, and it was just, it was amazing, at all different age groups, backgrounds, and I think it was a certain council member, Boomgarden, was it last year, suggested that we should give the community an opportunity to participate in this, and I think that's spot on. Something that was brought up is that in some communities, and I really like the way this is done, is somewhere where you can see it when you're leaving town, it says, "Thank you for visiting." And so, with these existing monuments, if you look at them, they're tilted at such an angle where that's really not feasible, especially if it's over here and you're going this way. And so that might be something we address at a further point. Of course, that has Caltrans implications as well. But all in all, I thought it was a great turnout of ideas, and if we're voting on it, I'm going to go with nine.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to defer my vote to the noted artist of Mike Pasquale.
He doesn't even know where he lives.
From an aesthetic appeal, it would be eight, just for the intricacy of it. But for the simplicity in getting the messaging rough and having it nice clean, it would probably be nine. Maybe with a little tweak on the welcome, and just tighten that up a little more so it's more visible. If that answers your question from an artistic view.
Eight is really interesting, for sure, but I agree with whomever commented saying at 60 miles an hour, it's a little bit much to be able to figure out what's going on, even though I would love to find something to do with it, because that's really creative and it looks really nice, but you need to have time to really appreciate it. I prefer, I think, number five, especially if it was, rather than uplighting, if it's going to be backlit, like internally. I think as far as simplicity, and of course, the colors can always be changed no matter what, but as the design right there, it is simple, and you talk about in line with our current branding. It's almost a, I don't know. I like, eight, of course, it's great, but probably not for this. And then I could go with eight, five, or nine, but I think if I had to pick for me, I would go with five, whatever that's worth.
Through the mayor. I'm still perplexed on number eight, when you said, looking at it at 60. I won't say how fast I will pass those signs, but it's generally well beyond 60 because of the speed limit there. But to what the mayor said, I mean, it's, I looked down at our pins and just started doing a quick comparison, and that sticks with the branding that we're really doing, because we've got the same font with the name of the city that's on our lapel pins in number five. And then we have the ducks which stick out on this, which stick out on that. Number eight, great concept, but I would never catch that there were ducks when I come up 99 seeing that, because I'm looking at traffic. Number nine, I'm trying to figure out what that is. It's almost busy on the top. I guess that's trees coming in or something. And what I liked about five was it was two-sided. That was the only one that said, "Thank you for visiting," or something like that on the back. And you see that, you know, a lot of, yeah, a lot of other businesses, again, they're not angled correctly, we'd have to figure that out, but I think in the bigger scope of things, if we get down to the nitty-gritty, figure out colors, figure out illumination to where it pops, we want to tell people, "Thank you for coming," and we, you know, we want to welcome them in and thank them for being here and spending their tax dollars and everything else. I like five myself.
Through the mayor, one more time. Natalie, I'm thinking, the scores on these were like only three or four points separating each one of these, I think. They were like super close. It was, so, yeah. No, I'm good with five. I have no problem with five, other than just, I'm not a big, the silhouette and ducks, they grate on me, but that's fine. That's got nothing to do with it.
If there were chickens, we'd be fine.
Yeah, chickens would be fine.
So, you have your input there, Ashley? I don't know if you have exactly one. Would you like us to informally vote? Or what would you need from us? Ben can tell you.
Yes, council?
Of the choices up there, I would go with five as well, so.
I would just note that there is a winner for the selected winner.
Oh, yes.
With a small appreciation for their effort, so I would definitely select one. And then, if there is some direction, we could definitely fine-tune with a few options that we come through as we fine-tune those. We could get maybe an artist to give us a little more fine-tune approach, if you really want to bring nine into it, but I would select a winner for tonight and then give direction.
Well.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before you select one, if you have a chance to send it out to public comment as well, that might be a great opportunity.
You know, that might be a good idea. Do you have any comment? No? Good. Sir, go ahead.
Michael McFarlane, I'm Uba City, also on the senior commission. And if I remember rightly, actually, wouldn't, number five, one of them, we talked about putting LED lighting in that ring around the top.
So internally?
It could be varied, it could be done in different colors, it could be seasonal, it adds some extra variety to that. And also, the welcome on the bottom would be it letters that stood out and were backlit, so that they would be very visible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? All right. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Attorney. Appreciate it. I think you got number five, ma'am. Sounds like to me. All right.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Number 23, future agenda items, opportunity to discuss city manager about items that came up in the meeting that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Any comments in the public for that? Anybody up here care to throw anything out? Nope? All right, so we'll move on to reports and communications, starting with city manager.
Mayor, if it's appropriate, Chief Baker has provided a response to the question related to the costs, and I can convey that if possible.
Sure.
And so the cost is, the annual cost is $3,000 per camera, and that pays for the software maintenance and increased technology. The $256,000 that we are receiving covers all 25 cameras for three years. That includes installation and maintenance, and also, if anything breaks or is vandalized, they pay for it as part of that cost. So you're correct in terms of there's an annual cost per camera, $3,000 per year. This funding pays for it for three years, and then after that, we would need to come up with another funding source for that ongoing cost for those cameras.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Chief Baker.
All right, with that, I'll transition into my other comments.
Go ahead.
I want to thank Ashley for coordinating the mayor's bus tour yesterday, and she also has a shop talk scheduled for June 19th at the Happy Viking at noon, in which we will talk about the potential revenue measure. Also tomorrow is the first office hours that are being provided by the SBDC here at City Hall from 10 to 2. Also, Development Services has created the Solar App Plus, we're now in compliance, and that individuals can apply for an automated solar plan review and solar permit online. And then another thing that I want to point out is this fantastic cover of the territorial dispatch, which has some of our senior commissioners on there. So very much appreciate our senior commission and appreciate the coverage of what they do for our community. So thank you.
We have a bunch of copies you can sign for us later, all right? That's right, you're going to have to. All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
So sorry, if I could just have five seconds to remind the city council, I will not be in physical attendance or here for the next meeting, as I will be on a family trip, it is that time of year again, and there will be another attorney covering for me, and I'll give you the update, but I just wanted to remind you that the next meeting, first meeting in June, I will be stepping out and spending some time with my family. Thank you.
All right. That's good, good to hear. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Harris. Attended the, another meeting of the Sacramento area Council of Governments Funding Group to help present a funding mechanism to the Board of SECOG for transportation and other funds. Attended the police memorial and to the police department, you know, very well produced, lots of attendance as well. At the regional housing authority meeting, we elected Bob Wooton from Live Oak, now is the new chair, Denise Conrato from Colusa as the vice chair, and Susan Gallody as the tenant representative. And attended this afternoon, attended the meet and greet for Emily Rary, she's the new outreach person from Beal Air Force Base, which she's very excited about connecting with the city of Uba City. And to Ashley, and Ben, and Diana, and to everyone that was participative in the mayor's tour, again, I think, you know, those outreach opportunities are awesome, and if you're listening to this or watching this on video and you haven't been on one of those, strongly encourage you to do so. It's a great opportunity to see what's going on here in Uba City.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kirchner, Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended Sebouka recently. We approved the preliminary, amended the budget, and we also had the evaluation of our, the director, Michael Bassett. Moving on to Mosquito, we had a merit increase for the admin manager, and then we did an interim appointment for our representative in Marysville, who they've been looking for quite a while to fill, and it turns out it's going to be former mayor Ricky Samatoya?
Samatoya.
Gilser, we did the appointment for a new chair, looks like Karen Baines drew the short straw. And we had a public hearing for the 2024-2025 fiscal budget. Regional Water Authority approved the fiscal budget for 2024-2025. There's going to be a due hike of 5% and also a 4% COLA and merit increase. With Transit, we approved the 2024-2025 budget, salary adjustment, COLA for staff, set a public hearing for July 18th to hear about route changes. They're starting to see a ridership bump due to the fact that state employees are being required to go a minimum of two days back to work. Also, a big shout out to the PD for their police memorial service, which we've always done well. I had a couple of individuals from the other side of the river who had never tended before, and they were absolutely blown away, so well done. Also attended the kickoff for the Elshimers, they have an annual fundraiser, it's a walk. They had a breakfast over in Marysville to talk about that. The mayor and I attended the Mong's Veterans Memorial Celebration, or, excuse me, the Remembrance over in Marysville, and for the folks that fought and died in that war, veterans in Vietnam War. And then lastly, participated briefly in the mayor's bus tour, and we talked about the exciting things that are happening with the Merrymint Village project with Habitat, and that's my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended the police memorial, which is always great, and I was honored to put one of the flowers down for one of the lost souls that protect us all. Also went to the Happy Viking and met with the new Beal lady that is there for the outreach. I want to mention the fact that we lost a pillar of our community here back in April, Sheriff Freddie Whitaker. I don't know if you're, all of you are familiar with him, but he passed away on April 25th, and they had his memorial this last week, and did a lot of great things, was a real trailblazer. I didn't realize, because I was just a young kid when he became sheriff, but he...
I didn't realize, because I was just a young kid when he became sheriff, but he implemented a lot of policies and such throughout the state. So he was a mover and shaker in this state for law enforcement and I just wanted to recognize that family and wish them my best wishes. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy couple of weeks, been all the things that these gentlemen talked about that we've all attended. PD knocked it out of the park as always, and it doesn't matter when you know the 21 gun salute's coming, it always jumps on the first one. So, but very polished and I really, really appreciate you guys, what you did there. Very, very moving, to say the least. We met with transit, we had the transit meeting. And with that, the big news, I think we reported last time, is we did get the final funding. So everything is moving forward. And to our mayor, it came from SECOG, the last bit of the grant that came through for transit. So they are moving forward with design and everything for the next generation transit facility. We are going to be relocating operations temporarily out to the Uba County Airport in the coming months, just for the simple fact of the junction over there where Caltrans is doing the expansion. RWMA, we've had a couple of meetings during this time. I know that we had one of our employees here earlier. We have got to find a new executive director for RWMA, we are working through that. Once we get some options nailed down as far as how we are proceeding, then the chair, which is Karen Baines and myself, plan on holding an informational meeting with all of the city and county administrators to bring everybody up to speed because as I brought out earlier, we are still in the middle of a 1383 audit. So we're looking at everything, making sure the staff's taken care of and the audit continues smoothly. We have had another meeting with the folks or the temple leadership, specifically the temple president. The first meeting, we talked about the items that needed to be done so that we have a good, safe event here in our community come November. And then the mayor and myself are going to be following up, having probably meetings every couple of weeks with the temple president, with the anticipation from our last meeting that they should have everything turned in to us by the end of June. So that's where we're moving forward so that both PD and FIRE know, so that we can get that started off in the right direction. And the mayor and I look forward to working with you guys and being in on the tactical meetings and stuff as well, just to keep the continuity of everything in the right direction because we want a successful event, but we want a safe event. That's what we got to work on. I had the liaison meeting with Uba City Unified, that went well. I can't think of anything earth-shattering right now that really came out of that, except they did bring up the fact that enrollment was down, I think, 7%. Questions that we asked on that as people leaving the area or whatnot, and it seemed to be more of, I think, just, you know, people are aging and there's not as many kids in our local community. So hopefully that will change with the future developments that we have coming in. And so I think that's basically about it at this point. So, and thank you again for Barry coming up today and checking out our community, so.
All right, thank you very much. I had an opportunity to meet with the folks who are opening a new Irish pub in the south end of Pluma Street called Hooligans, in the old Justin's Kitchen. And it looks really nice in there, they sampled some food, what I ever had was really good. And they have some really big plans for live music and outdoor seating and things like that. So it's going to be an exciting thing on the south end of there at Pluma Street. I too attended the Peace Office Memorial at the PD and of course, just echo whatever the ones already said, is that you guys did a great job in honoring those who have fallen and coordinating our community to come together in recognition of that ultimate sacrifice. And I too have folks come up to me who were not necessarily living on this side of the river, who were just amazed and impressed with the whole ceremony. So thank you for that. Done a lot of talking about SECOG today, it's always proud to do that. Last meeting, we discussed a lot about what they call the blueprint, which is the plan moving forward. There's a lot of options or theories of how we're going to build out the different communities in the six county region. There's a lot of debate on the validity or the opinions on what we, what things are going to look like and based on the assumptions that are made. We determined that, we agree that these are assumptions we're going to do and that will, that will in turn fuel decisions when it comes down to funding and types of projects. Of course, a lot of, a lot of focus is on infill, lowering vehicle miles traveled, lowering greenhouse gas emissions, trying to meet our target there because if we don't meet it, we're going to lose a lot of state and federal funding because of that. So that's a lot of the goals. A lot of debate is to, okay, if we're talking about vehicles, miles traveled, are we counting electric vehicles? And there's some debate on, yeah, we are, maybe one day we won't have to, and there's a lot of confusion and disagreement and from some frustration on some of that stuff that shouldn't be counted, that is, but they're working through it and making progress slowly but surely. The bus tour, as mentioned, was a very big success, I think. We were, we were full, we have people inquiring about other ones, and of course, Ashley, thank you so much for everything and all you all who were at various stops. I think everyone did a great job and it's always, it's always nice to do something like that where it's a win-win no matter what we do. So it's always a pleasure to showcase our area. Appreciate Ashley helping me keep everybody from talking. When we're trying, trying to give a tour, like a tour guide up there, everyone's all into talking with themselves, which is good, we want them doing that, but we also want to hear about all the other stuff that we're doing. So that was great and we're sure we're going to be doing something similar again soon. The, see, we've been doing some community information, providing stops regarding the facts and figures based on the revenue measure with different, different community organizations. I know recently we did the Farm Bureau and of course, tomorrow morning, Fire Chief and I will be on 93Q doing the same thing, just providing folks information as to why the money is needed, what our plans are for it, and so they can make a fully informed choice when it comes time to walk into the voting booth. As Councilmember Kirchner mentioned, we did a proclamation for the Mong community over in Marysville at their Veterans Park. They were very appreciative and they did a lot of explaining as to the secret war in Vietnam and how those folks, they stepped up to fight in favor of freedom and democracy only to be basically killed once we left and they had to flee over into Thailand and were being literally shot at and killed as they're doing it. So those gentlemen who are still around and represented that community, it was a pleasure to honor them and recognize them. And that's it. Well, speaking of revenue measure, I'll be going to the Mong Church in Uba City. Don't remember the date, but sometime soon, city manager and I will, Saturday. Going over there to meet them, greet with them and just put a, just discuss things and get to know them along with, by the way, have you heard about the revenue measure? So we're taking the opportunity to do that. So very good people and that would be about it for now. Thank you all for riding through us this entire meeting and have a good night. Thank you.